Good evening and welcome to the Town and Quarter Madera Planning Commission for Tuesday, January 24th. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Kenny, Commissioner Bundy, Chair Chase, Vice Chair Rizzo,
Here.
And Commissioner Bandell.
Thank you. Join me in a salute to the flag, please.
Pledge of allegiance in the flag from the United States of America to the Republic of Washington, liberation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. On tonight's agenda, so if you have something that we're not going to talk about later, you have three minutes to make a comment. So if you do, please step up to the microphone. Tracy will check email and hands up.
No hands raised.
Okay.
I'll check email.
So seeing no aspirants, then we will close the public comment section of this meeting. And we will go right to the consent calendar. So we have to adopt Resolution 23-002 by consent. Anybody can make a motion here. This is about the public teleconference meetings. So will somebody move for this to be?
I'm moving.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay. Voice vote or?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then we'll go on to our agenda items. Tonight, we have two items. One is a new hearing and the other is a study session, essentially a preliminary hearing. So the first one, the new hearing is 71 Tamil Vista Boulevard, a conditional use permit application, PL 22-0059 for a proposed Total Wine &amp; More store at 71 Tamil Vista Boulevard at the Marketplace Shopping Center. This is a significant item. There's a lot to it. Tracy, this is your item to present.
Okay.
And you're going to enlighten us as to who's here to present and so forth. I don't, I'm not sure who the players will be.
There are several members of the applicant party here from the store corporate to the property owner and the applicant's planning team, as well as the applicant's traffic engineer.
Great. Okay.
Ready for my presentation?
Well, take us through it, please. Thank you.
Glad everyone wanted to see that. Thank you, Commissioners, Chair Chase and Vice Chair Rizzo. As Peter said, the Planning Commission is considering tonight a conditional use permit application for a proposed Total Wine &amp; More store at 71 Tamil Vista Boulevard at the Marketplace Shopping Center. The store will be situated in the northern portion of the existing Marketplace shop. Developed with an approximately 51,000 square foot shopping center. The shopping center is single story and consists of three buildings and a surface parking lot. The marketplace is situated between Highway 101 to the east and Tamil Vista Boulevard to the west. The parcel north of the shopping center is the Corder Madera DMV and to the south is the Marin Suites Hotel. All three of those parcels are zoned MX1 Tamil Vista corridor. Excuse me, Tamil Vista mixed use corridor and to the west across Tamil Vista Boulevard, our residential neighborhoods and those are zoned R2 low density multiple dwelling and R1 medium density residential. The applicant proposes to combine the existing Any Mountain space with the adjacent yoga space and former arch rival space to facilitate the 19,000 summit square foot Total Wine Store. No new floor area is proposed and there are no changes to the existing landscaping or parking. In May of 2022, the landlord applied for a minor design review permit to make some changes to the storefront entry area. The proposed change was to remove the Craftsman style entry you see in the photo and replace it with a rectangle rectangular type of entry more aligned with the rectangular shingled facade of the Book Passage building that faces west. A building permit was issued for the front entry work. At the time of the design review application, the tenant wasn't known. Construction has not yet commenced on that part of the project. The current tenants at the site include a large bookstore, two health clubs, two takeout food establishments, a daycare center and two salons. Several tenant spaces at the marketplace are currently vacant. The tenant space at 71 Tamil Vista Boulevard was previously occupied by a grocery store called the Co-op Market back dating to the 70s to late 80s and then in the 90s, the Any Mountain Outdoor Sporting Goods store. The tenant space has been vacant since September of 2021. Other large tenants at the center in the past have been primarily retail and restaurant type of tenants. Within the MX1 zone and within commercially zoned districts in Corder Madera, a liquor store or bottle shop is conditionally permitted use. And in order to grant conditional use permit, the Planning Commission must make three conditional use permit findings that are set forth in 1826050. This same section also sets forth for additional findings that are required for liquor stores, offices or financial institutions. And within California, alcohol licenses are regulated by alcoholic beverage control. And the issuance of a liquor license typically doesn't involve the town other than verification of zoning. The Total Wine Store license for on-premise consumption is associated with their tasting areas and their wine education classroom. And a license has an undue concentration of that particular type in the Census tract. And that excess is determined by ABC regulations and it's based on the ratio of licenses to population. And when there's an undue concentration, ABC rules state that the local governing body shall make a determination that issuance of the license serves a public convenience or necessity. And in Corder Madera, that's the Corder Madera Town Council. Staff is going to process the PCN in accord with our past practice, which is by resolution of the Town Council. The last two PCN determinations that we made were for Andy's Local Market and for Stang's Hot Dogs. Tonight, the Planning Commission is only considering the use permit. The Planning Commission does not need to make a recommendation to Town Council regarding the PCN. The Total Wine &amp; More store consists primarily of retail sales of beer, specialty wine and distilled spirits. The sales floor will be approximately 17,000 square feet and including beer and wine coolers, checkout areas, break rooms, restrooms and utility rooms. The store includes one wine tasting area and one beer tasting area. Those are the two smaller squares shown at the center of the floor plan. This, the store also includes a wine education center. That's the larger square to the right edge of the screen. It's 600 square feet and provides classroom seating for 28 to 30 students. On-site consumption of beer and wine is allowed only in the designated beer and wine tasting areas and the wine education room and in accord with ABC regulations. One cigar humidor, it's a walk-in cigar humidor is proposed. That's at the bottom right indicated with a small red arrow. No smoking is allowed on the premises. The applicant will be instructed to obtain an out tobacco retailer license with their business license for this aspect of the store. Lastly, there's an existing warehouse and stockroom that includes a loading dock that's outlined in the green square at the top of this slide. That's proposed to remain. It's about 1,000 square feet. Host hours of operation of the store are Monday to Saturday, 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM and Sunday from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Deliveries to the warehouse and stockroom are proposed to occur Monday to Saturday from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There are also small product deliveries going from the store to customers' homes that would occur twice daily. Condition of approval for, you would refer to page five of the resolution, references these hours of operation. The anticipated number of employees is 50 to 60 employees overall with 10 to 15 employees on site per shift. And based on customer transaction data for existing Total Wine Stores, about approximately 600 customer transactions per day are anticipated. Limited number of product tastings are proposed a few hours per week. The two proposed tasting areas will be delineated by barriers, staffed by employees and can accommodate four to five customers at a time. The store's wine education center offers reservation only wine education classes for up to 30 guests. The topics will vary, but generally they're taught by industry experts and trained Total Wine staff. Those classes are typically one to one and a half hours long and occur on weekday, a weekday evening or weekend afternoon. The Total Wine, that applicant anticipates one to two classes per month. And these numbers are consistent with the classes offering offered at other existing Total Wine stores within the greater Bay Area. The store offers employee training program at the corporate level. Then employees are required to attend and it includes special training and incentives to prevent alcohol sales to minors. The store includes surveillance cameras throughout the store. The product tastings are controlled by trained staff in accord with ABC regulations and specific corporate procedures. Lastly, the Centralman Police Authority Chief reviewed the application and expressed no concerns with the conditional use permit application as proposed. Parking at the site is based upon its overall use as a shopping center. And 204, excuse me, 204 spaces are required and 210 are provided in the surface parking lot. One loading berth is also required and provided at the northeast corner of the site. The applicant has provided a technical memorandum that analyzes vehicle trips that would be generated by the proposed use. And the purpose of the memorandum is to support a one particular finding required for a conditional use permit, which is that the proposed use will not generate more traffic or require more parking than other uses serving the day-by-day needs of the immediate neighborhood. And a wide variety of uses are allowed in the MX1 zone. There are 38 conditional uses listed as allowed with a variety of characteristics. Some examples of conditional uses in MX1 are bars, breweries, restaurants, department stores and theaters, including the proposed Total Wine Use, which is liquor store, bottle shop. The MX1 zone also lists 96 permitted by right uses. By right uses include some larger scale uses such as grocery stores, bowling alleys, yard good stores and hardware stores. By right uses in the zone also include typically smaller uses such as beauty salons, ice cream shops and pet stores. And finally, by right uses that are included in MX1 may fall in the middle, such as furniture stores and gyms. If the commission has specific questions about permitted and conditionally permitted uses in MX1 zone, staff has that list for discussion purposes. And the permitted by right use, as you know, doesn't require a conditional use permit or analysis of traffic or other impacts prior to operating in the zone. So the traffic engineer analyzed trip generation rates for the Total Wine Store compared to by right exemplary uses of a grocery store, a yoga studio and a drugstore. And the analysis shows that the by right uses could generate more trips than the proposed Total Wine Use. The town's consulting traffic engineer conducted a peer review of the technical memo and concurs that the memo documents sufficiently that the store meets the requirement that it doesn't, would not generate more traffic or require more parking than other uses serving the day-to-day needs of the neighborhood. Staff can make all conditional use findings. And an analysis of those findings is included in the staff report and as attachment one of draft resolution. Staff can also make the special findings that are required for offices, financial institutions and liquor stores. Shown here on the screen and analysis of these particular findings can also be found in the staff report and attached resolution. Staff is recommending approval of the draft resolution. I'm here for any questions that you may have. I see on the call, we also have two representatives from Total Wine, the applicant's traffic engineer, the property owner here, as well as the representative for the applicant.
Okay, great. So at this moment, we're going to go ahead and have the commissioners ask staff any questions. And then we'll go into getting a presentation from the applicants. And we will ask questions of the applicant. I have no doubt. So that's the basic immediate format that we'll go through. So I'll start over to my left here and ask Margaret if she has any questions for Tracy out of the gate.
I don't right now.
Okay, all right. Mr. Rizzo.
Tracy, since we're probably, since it's a new MX zone, we're probably going to do a lot of conditional use permits within this area. I was just, just maybe for the public's knowledge, would you tell, tell us the difference between a variance and a conditional use? So people don't get confused. It's a
A variance is something that our code does not allow and someone is with a variance application is asking for an exception to the rules. Conditional use is different in that a conditional use is allowed with conditions. It's permitted in the zone with, but gives the planning commission special flexibility to consider the varying characteristics of that use and how they may be adjusted in order to make sure that the use is appropriate for that particular zone. So a use that may be appropriate, but may need special conditions in order to operate.
Excellent definition. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Dr. Bundy.
Yeah, I know we're not voicing an opinion in regard to the ABC license permits, but in reading through, I thought it was interesting that the tasting license is granted without any problem. But to have a tasting license, you ought to also have to have on sale to go with that. And then that requires the Town Council approval. ABC is a big bureaucracy and it's very complicated and there's some unnecessary steps in there. I didn't notice there was a concern from a couple residents on Sandpiper Court. I wonder if you could chronologically give us the history of the development of that area. To my recollection, the marketplace was developed first and the Sandpiper complex was developed after that.
I'm not too sure of the date of the Sam Piper Circle. It's called Casa Madera. For those of you listening that I got it wrong, it's not called Sandpiper Circle. That's the street. But my understanding is, and the property owners here, I think it was the 70s that the marketplace was built and I believe Casa Madera was in the 80s. But I'm not sure. I could probably verify that before the end of the meeting.
That, that was my recollection also. That's all.
Okay. All right. No questions for Tracy to speak of besides that. Daniel, do you have some questions?
In a while.
Yeah, you referred to a design review application for this. Was that, that was that with this particular user in mind or?
In mind, that was a question that staff asked and it was related by the applicant that there wasn't a tenant for that store yet. When, at the time of the design review approval. Now, and as of September, the issuance of the building permit, we did, we were aware that it was Total Wine. That was, that was a landlord application, which is commonplace for our malls, for them to make certain changes to accommodate an as-yet undecided tenant. Or come more commonly to demolish areas and re-demise them into different sized spaces without necessarily knowing the tenant and sometimes knowing the tenant.
And are the conditions you're recommending consistent with that design review particularly relative to signage and lighting?
The Marketplace Shopping Center has a master sign program. The master sign program dictates building signage, lighting, sizing, color, as well as freeway facing signage. And there's a freestanding sign that it regulates as well. And new signage would need to be consistent with that. And if it wasn't, it would require an amendment to that master sign program before the Planning Commission. As far as lighting, exterior lighting, those are standard conditions included in every design review approval, specific ones for commercial and residential. I believe the resolution tonight does have some sign, some lighting requirements included in it as well, but either one would apply to the tenant space.
Do you know if any of the other existing tenants had any concerns about this application?
I have not heard anything from any of the other tenants at the center. And maybe the property owner who's present could speak if he's had any discussions that I'm not aware of.
And this may be a question for the traffic engineer, which I understand is going to be available online. But I understand the analysis. But it doesn't address peak hour traffic entering and exiting off of Tamil Vista. And how, how that might be accommodated, whether there would be required any changes to the driveway entrances to the parking lot or anything like that?
I'll defer to Dennis. He is on the call to answer that at the appropriate time. There is one central driveway access point that is appears to be most often used and there is actually a secondary driveway that's less frequently used at the north corner next to the DMV parcel. So they're providing two driveways, but I'll defer to him as far as peak hour PM traffic.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I wanted to just review this PCN statement and so forth. We're not to essentially regard that PCN in our consideration here. That's outside of our purview right now at this point, right?
Yes, ABC regulations state that it should be made by the, the governing body. Or if they've designated someone on staff or some other commissioner board to do so, which in Corder Madera, they have not.
And council then will take up this issue about the census tract being saturated.
Correct.
Defined here, right?
Correct. And type 42 licenses and they, ABC considers that to be in the same category as a pub or tavern. So when you look at the list of type 40 licenses, which I do have a slide showing that, it includes a lot of our restaurants. And we're oversaturated for that reason. Meanwhile, the type 86 instructional tasting is a license that provides an industry expert to serve the tastings. And the reason for the type 42, according to the applicant, is so that their staff can serve those tastings. And that's why it's looked at as, as a pub or tavern type because you have a, essentially an employee of the store that's doing the, the serving similar to a waitstaff at a, at a pub or tavern.
So you don't really have any knowledge of what would happen if a restaurant went back into the corner there and how that would be reviewed as if they'd, they'd be asking for a
There's food associated with a restaurant. So you have to have a specifically robust enough menu to be considered as not, the PCN not necessary for that type of license.
Okay. All right. So it wouldn't, having this licensed would not inhibit the return of a restaurant to the corner of
No, I can show the slide that there's a different license type for the restaurant type. And I think it's a 41. And the reason for the different license type is because there's food at that establishment and you have to have enough variety of food. So for example, the Stang's hot dog was type, was a certain type because they didn't have a robust enough menu and that required the PCN for Stang's.
Okay, all right.
Hundred different licenses.
Okay, 0 through 100. All right. So we've, we've asked our questions. It's time for the applicant to make their presentation. So introduce yourself and start the ball rolling here.
There's a switch on the top of the mic to turn green.
I think I got it. Okay. Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Rawlings. I am a third-party consultant to Total Wine &amp; More. Joining me this evening is Jack Tocalsey, who is the property owner. Also online is Phil Armstrong, who is the National Director of Real Estate and Katrin Hunsinger. And Katrin is in charge of the West Coast real estate. Also Dennis Billado, who is our traffic engineer is also online and available for questions. So I, I wanted to, you know, give you a bit of a presentation and I might be able to address some of the questions there. I, I know a lot about PCNs and so on and so forth. And I know that that's not in the purview, but if you like to ask them additional questions, I, I, I can probably provide a lot of answers for that. In general, I wanted to say first, thank you to Tracy. The staff report I thought was just absolutely excellent. She and I worked together extensively and we covered, I think, as many details as I've ever covered on a Total Wine &amp; More application. And I appreciate her extra efforts on it. It came out. I think this half report was very succinct and covered all of the points. And for the record, we do agree to the, that we agree with the findings. And we do agree to all of the draft conditions of approval as presented to you this evening. I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to introduce you to Total Wine &amp; More. Not everybody is familiar with them. And I did have a kind of a slide presentation and a couple of talking points that I'd like to go through with you. Well, I don't know if you can kind of see that correctly, but this is just some quick, some quick facts about the, about the company. It was founded in 1991. They are the, they have, we inventory over 8,000 different wines, which is the largest selection you'll find of any, any single retailer across the United States. There's approximately almost 250 stores now across the country. I believe that there's somewhere in 28 to 30 stores here in the state of California. We will be opening a store in Santa Rosa. And we do have some other stores in the Bay Area, but mostly in the South Bay area and Pleasanton might be the closest one to Corder Madera. There's one in Daly City. There's also one down in Fremont, San Jose and some other Mountain View, et cetera, et cetera. We continue to expand here in, in the state of California. The stores have been exceptionally well received in every community that we have opened up a store. We certainly haven't been any kind of policing issue or anything like that with our stores. We've been embraced because we have such a large selection. As was noted in the staff report, average store is going to employ somewhere around 50 people. They will be very, very trained individuals. There'll be approximately 10 to 15 people working in any given shift. Our busiest days, as you can imagine, are going to be Saturdays and Sundays. The stores are typically about 20,000 square feet roughly. Some are a little bit larger, some are a little bit smaller. This one is, I think it's 19,500 square feet or something like that, which is pretty close to our standard size there. We also enjoy partnering with a lot of the local craft brewers. The craft brewing industry, as we all know, has exploded in the last 10 or 15 years and every, it seems like every community has multiple small little craft brewers. Those folks are challenged oftentimes with getting shelf space. The major grocery store chains usually have contracts with the big Budweisers, the Coors, et cetera, et cetera. And so sometimes shelf spaces is challenging. We try to provide a lot of shelf space for local crafter, the local craft brew industry and we take great pride in that. Couple of other quick points is that there's nobody allowed under the age of 21 to come into our store unless they're accompanied by Couple of other quick points is that there's nobody allowed under the age of twenty-one to come into our store unless they're accompanied by. An adult, you know, we, we do not see very many kids even coming with their parents, but. If they're with their parents, then that's a parental decision to have them come with them and, and we do allow that, but we certainly. Police that very, very carefully, and we, we certainly haven't had a problem with that at all. Total Wine and More, like a lot of companies, we are committed to giving and we give a lot to local causes as well as national causes. We take great pride in that, we think it's very important to be part of any, any community and part of national organizations. With that, I wanted to kind of transition now into showing you some, some photos because some of you may not be familiar with Total Wine and More. I can tell you that. There are millions upon millions of dollars that are spent on the tenant improvements and the fixturing of each and every one of our stores. We take tremendous pride in saying that our merchandising is second to nobody. And these are just a couple of samples. I wanted to stop right there, Tracy, if we could, this is. The Wine Education Center. And these are basically classrooms. They hold, in this particular case, I think the classroom is going to hold like twenty-eight or thirty people, but they'll, they'll range anywhere from, you know, thirty-ish people to forty people. We have classes typically once a month during the week, maybe like a Thursday evening. And then also maybe one, once, I mean, I'm sorry, once a month that we would have a class. And it might be on a Thursday evening and then we might also have a class on a Saturday afternoon. Although the classes have some type of theme, in this, in particular case, you might be able to see that they were having a lecture about the Bordeaux region. So at these classes, it's a seminar and you're going to get to. A lot of history about the region, the grapes, the major wineries that are in there. And there will be some tastings, tastings are very heavily regulated, that's under the type eighty-six license and we follow those. Tasting amounts, the pours are no more than one ounce at a time. We only serve you a handful of them, so you, you will have gotten essentially about the equivalent of a glass. Of wine after you've tasted all of those over an hour, hour and a half period of time. These classes are taught by an employee of Total Wine and More that is very much an expert in the area. All of these classes, you actually have to go online and register for the class. They typically sell out pretty quickly, they're very, very popular and we feel that that's. What differentiates us from a lot that we're. Providing an education and that there's a lot of wine connoisseurs out there that certainly are eager to learn more about it and we. Provide an excellent opportunity for that. And the next, we do the rest of them, we do sell cigars. And then it's wine and distilled spirits and we believe our stores are, are very, very clean. And very, very well merchandised, so we don't spare any expense on making sure that our presentation is top-notch. With that, I had a, a couple of other points that I would like to bring up to you. Total Wine and More has. Has created a, a tremendous brand and there may only be one other company that is somewhat similar and that's Bevmo. But Bevmo was purchased a couple of years ago and. The store concept is very, very likely to change over time, they were purchased by a company called Go Puff. Which is more of an online type of grocery experience there and they came in and purchased a lot of the Bevmo locations. One is because they have alcohol licenses and two, they have many locations and with a delivery service, you need an infrastructure of. Of warehouses, so we are a, a brand and a, and a very, very unique retailer. We consider ourselves to be a specialty retailer, we're different in terms of. Not only our product, but the education. We are somewhat of a destination because people are oftentimes looking for something that you're not going to be able to find in a regular grocery store. You may have a particular wine that you tasted that you really enjoyed and. Were probably inventorying it and you might not be able to find that in most of the grocery stores, in fact. With eight thousand. Different wines, I, I think grocery stores are much, much less than that. The. In terms of our, our, you know, of our traffic, we did do a trip generation. Study, just to kind of, you know, share with everybody, this is what the expectations are in terms of. How many customers we would have day, daily, and that's actually based on store data. From other stores in the area, so this wasn't an assumption. In the trip generation, I, I know that Mr. Kenny asked about, you know, peak hours. We're not like a grocery store, I mean, we all know that grocery stores, starting about four o'clock, you know, three thirty, four o'clock through about six o'clock. Get to be very busy because people are coming, you know, coming home from work and they need to purchase some things. That's not quite how our traffic works, we're not a place that you come to on your way home to work. We get a lot of shoppers on Saturdays, we get shoppers kind of throughout the day. Obviously during the week, our, our hours, you know, and later in the afternoon are where more than our customers do come, but it's not. The mass of people that you might see at, at some type of grocery type of store there. We have. Taken a lot of steps corporately. To train the people about responsible, being a very responsible retailer of alcoholic beverages. Our, our employees go through a lot of training, we have quite a few people on the floor looking. All of our cash, our, our register workers are trained and doing proper identification checks. We have managers there, we're making sure that people that are in our store are not, you know, intoxicated already and we're not going to. Make a sale to somebody who appears to be intoxicated, we certainly go through great lengths to make sure that we're not selling to any minors. So that in every community that we've opened up, we, we, we haven't had any particular issues. We're excited to be here in Corte Madera, we're looking to, you know, continue to expand our footprint in this particular area. And I think that we would be. I think that we would be a welcome addition to, to, to the community and with that, I'm available for any questions and thank you for your attention.
Thank you, I think that you've given such a discourse here that will ask commissioners to direct things to you while you're up there. And we'll see what we get out of this round and then we'll go to Jack and whoever else wants to stand up here. Daniel, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
I would just have a question for the.
Okay, alright, Bob, do you want to ask any question?
Yeah, the good presentation in talking about the training for your staff. Are they, I assume then they're also certified as responsible beverage servers through ABC?
Well, the, the responsible beverage server program that you're probably referring to does apply to on-sale. Like restaurant servers and so on and so forth, the law did change and being a type forty-two establishment, we, we probably fall under. That same category and that would, that would apply to the folks that are actually pouring the, the folks that are in the. You know, the cashier and handling of the alcohol go through a responsible beverage training program that has been. Approved by ABC and those are pretty comprehensive types of programs, they, they. Get into very much the details about how to conduct a proper identification check and also how to, you know, recognize somebody that might. Might appear to be intoxicated.
Okay, the traffic situation that shows up on Tamal Vista. Usually when Redwood High School lets out and also in the evening is. Cars stack up to get on one-on-one or, or go across the. Richmond Bridge. Hopefully that'll get resolved, it'll probably take a decade, but that, that if they ever do the five-eighty-one-on-one, that. Should be helped, but that is at least a decade out and I just wanted to make a, a final pitch that. You know, I sort of like that entrance that's there, that it seems to work well with the shingle building, the darker colors. And the slate roof, so. Your, your call, but I just wanted to say, I think it looks quite nice.
Okay, not a question in that, but that's alright, so Mr. Rizzo.
What do we have here? So what are the peak hours of operation? When are you selling the most and when are, when you get the most traffic?
Clearly Saturdays and Sundays are going to be our, our busiest time kind of throughout the day. Yes, in the afternoons during the week would be more of a busy time for us. And, you know, we, we do open. Relatively early, obviously, we don't see quite as much foot traffic at ten AM on a Tuesday. As we would say at a four o'clock on a Tuesday, but the bulk of our sales is typically done on Fridays and Saturdays and Sundays. That's when people have a little bit more time to shop, this isn't a, a quick convenience buy, usually you're going there to maybe buy some type of specialty. Beverage that you can't find in other locations, maybe you're having a party over the weekend and you're there to make, you know, purchases of. Multiple different types of products there, but I hope that kind of, you know, gives you an idea.
Most of the traffic is probably in afternoon to early evening type of.
Correct, during the week and then weekends, it's kind of throughout the day.
And how they, do the tastings typically go? Is that going to be like an evening thing?
Yeah, it's an evening thing, we typically are done by, say, nine o'clock, they would start it at, say, seven o'clock is a, is a traditional start time for them, they go about an hour, hour and a half. So eight-thirty, but certainly not later than nine, I, I suppose that if there's a lot of questions in a very engaged group. You may, you know, the conversations may, may last a little bit longer, but it's, it's going to be an eight-thirty.
And is ten o'clock typically your, your closing operating hour? I just.
Yes, sir.
That's, because this place is dead at eight.
The town and in general.
Well, I should say that would be the latest that we would stay over open town and I, and I'm surely. That the operations manager, if, if over time they've realized, gee, we're not doing any sales from. Nine to ten, you know, an operations person would, would look at it and say, gee. I can save on the lights and I can save on a few wages, but our, our hours would, would not exceed ten o'clock.
And my last question is just about parking, I know there's some concerns about parking in the neighborhood across the street. Do you guys train or have a program to talk to your employees about keeping? Them parking in, in the parking lot and not in the neighboring streets because we do have an issue with that here in Corte Madera. And a number are, we have a lot of residential neighborhoods right next to.
Certainly, we. Couple of things with employee parking, you know, one, we want them to park in the, you know, the shopping center, the business that we're located in. We're asking them to kind of park farther away from the store entrance because we want our customers to go there. We haven't seen any other issues with employee parking in the past, there is. You know, a great number of employees that work retail, some people on a Saturday might actually be dropped off to go to work. You know, there's no reason to have your car there the entire time, but we, we certainly do. You know, educate our employees, they're not supposed to be parking out on the street and. Park in the shopping center, but we need you kind of far away.
Answers my question, thank you.
Thank you, Jim, Margaret Bendel.
I, I'll just make a comment first that I think it's curious you put your store or you want your store right next to the DMV. Just saying, but. Tell me why you think Corte Madera is the right place for this store when Bevmo is across the highway and we have so many other. Liquor. Places to buy liquor.
We believe that our. Entire presentation and the scope of our offering is. Not necessarily comparable to what you can find at a grocery store. Again, if you, if you're in love with a certain type of French wine from the Bordeaux region. You, you very well likely will have a very difficult time finding that at any other retailer other than Total Wine and More. We do like to be somewhat, you know, centrally located, we like to be near a freeway when we can. There will be, you know, visitors from, you know, the generalized region, it will all be Corte Madera. Residences, and so we, we found this area here, we go through great extensive demographic, you know, research in terms of. Where are the best places to locate our store and in, in this generalized area that. This Corte Madera area is central to kind of where we would like to be. In terms of the other, you know, stores that you mentioned there, again, we offer a lot more, we're a different shopping experience. Than many of the others and I had mentioned, you know, in terms of the Bevmo, you're very likely to see that. Business change due to the acquisition that was made of them. Sometime ago, you can look at GoPuff.com and you'll be able to see that it's much more of a online grocery type of. Retailer and so. I hope that that kind of addresses your question.
So I'm kind of curious about the. Humidor, is that what it is?
Yes.
Cigar area? Else is being sold there? Are there cigarettes being sold?
We do not carry cigarettes.
Okay, and so it's only cigars?
Correct.
And how is that? Regulated, not regulated, but someone goes in and wants to buy a cigar, is there someone there specifically? Kind of policing the, the cigar area or?
Well, yes, certainly, you know, we have multiple people located throughout the store and there are some people that are much more expert in, say, the beer section. And they, they oftentimes are assisting customers with. Making, you know, beer selections, the same thing with different wines and certainly distilled spirits and we also have folks that are dedicated toward monitoring the. The humidor area as well and we do locate that in an area that's fairly well, that's easily visible. To management and we do have an employee that, a couple. Eligible staff members.
And so. Are there tryouts of the cigar?
There is no smoking allowed on the premises.
A number of, of. Wine and liquor stores that I've been in sell things other than. That liquid product like snacks. Bags to carry on airplanes and. What, what else do you carry?
I, I would say this, ninety-eight percent of our product is, is going to be, you know, the distilled spirits, there are, you know, some. Limited, maybe food types of products there, but it, it would be, you know, some crackers and things along those lines, we don't sell. A lot of, you know, the, the other things that you might see in some of the liquor stores, it's, it's for the most, and we do, yeah, we, you know, provide, you know, gift bags. Are available for sale there, we don't sell. We don't sell lots of, you know, different types of foods or cheeses or anything like that, it's very, very limited. You, you would not find the same kind of selection that, that you might at some, some other liquor stores, I, I don't believe that we sell any candy bars or anything along those lines.
Okay, and, and had you considered that you're right next to the DMV?
We didn't see that there was any, you know, particular issues, we're not onsite consumption. You know, facility, we are designed for you to come in and make a purchase and take that, you know, to your home. And, and consume it there, we do conduct the tastings, but the tastings, as I mentioned to you, at, at the end, you would be. Getting roughly the equivalent of, of a glass, glass and a half of wine. There, so we're certainly not a drinking establishment, those types of activities are very, very regulated. If you came on to this, to the sales floor and, you know, like on a Saturday, we, we may have some craft. Beers that are there and again. It's very, very regulated by ABC about how many. How, how much can be served to anybody and is carefully monitored and it's certainly ABC feels comfortable that that's. Those are smart enough amounts that we wouldn't be getting people intoxicated.
When you say monitor, who, who's, you're monitoring it?
Correct.
Do, do you find that ABC or any kind of government agency? Do, do you find that ABC or any kind of government agency? Audits you on those kind of monitoring or watching over or?
Certainly, ABC oftentimes in conjunction with local law enforcement. They do sting operations all the time on people. They do it with major grocery stores. They do it with the small. You know, liquor stores and convenience stores. They'll send somebody in decoy, decoy operations trying to pass off. You know, fake identifications, you know, so they, they do come in and do monitor on a very regular basis. Even, you know, restaurants and bars. And like I said, a lot of it's in conjunction with law, local law enforcement. In this particular case, your community has the ability through the use permit process that if we're not. You know, following the rules, you guys have the ability to revoke a, you know, a use permit. In addition to ABC having the ability to potentially, you know, finesse or take other actions. And ultimately revoke a license if somebody's very egregious about breaking the rules.
And are your employees allowed to? Drink or smoke during their break times?
Certainly not on the premises. And we're like every other employee, employer, you can't show up to the job drunk. You know, we have very tight rules and regulations with our employees.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. I had the same question. Why the hell Corder Madera, of all places, to put down a big box store? And why not Larkspur Landing where the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is going away? And just luck of the draw, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I know Phil Armstrong and Catherine are on the phone. If you'd like to ask them. More, I'm sure they'll be able to give you a much more detailed answer than, than what I provided here.
So we have with all these other establishments, you're making the case that Bevmo is not really your competition in many ways. It's a different kind of liquor store, you're saying?
It is very likely going to be converted into a different format over the years. We, we've prouded ourselves on having a larger selection. We, we believe that our merchandising is much more superior than, than they're offering.
We have a liquor store in Corder Madera here that's a favorite of locals called Colonial Liquors. You know, they don't carry a broad supply of stuff, but how do you see you impacting those guys, for instance?
There's two, you know, ours, ours, we look at it as much more of a specialty and, and destination. You're there out there. A lot of our shoppers are seeking a particular type of wine. Liquor stores, obviously, a smaller format store is not gonna be able to carry the, as large of a variety. Oftentimes, people that are going to those stores are looking to. A quicker shopping experience. Folks that come into Total Wine and More. Rarely do we have somebody just run in and grab one thing and go out. There's a, a lot of shopping that goes on. And we find that with a smaller format liquor stores, you know, I know what I, I'm looking for. I'm gonna go in, I'm gonna grab it. And it's a much higher turnover, quicker shopping experience. And so we haven't found that, you know, we're, we're impacting. You know, I haven't heard this, this great uproar from other liquor store owners that they're gonna be closed down. You know, I know like Walmart, a lot of people. Worry about Walmart shutting down and other, other smaller businesses. We, we certainly haven't heard that. In other communities that, that were having a significant impact.
Okay, and you said you've got an application in or you're trying to open one in Santa Rosa. Where are other nearby stores of Total Wine?
I think the, the ones that I kind of rumbled on if they're real quickly, Pleasant and, I have a little list here. I know we have a store in Fremont, Mountain View, Pleasant and San Ramon. There's two stores in San Jose, San Mateo, and as well as San Mateo. In the Greater Bay Area.
You're practically the safe way of wine. Okay. Yeah, for the moment, I don't have any other questions. Nobody else further questions for this gentleman? So, thank you. Oh, yes.
The, one of the other tenants, Book Passage occasionally has an event there with an author speaking. And they can get up to fifty people for an event like that. And those are probably largely single occupant people, so maybe fifty cars or forty-five cars. And they don't often have a lot of ability to schedule those. They're getting national authors and they have to fit into their. Schedule of making their rounds. So, and then if you have a wine event with thirty people, you know, a teaching event. Now that's, that's ninety cars. So are you willing to coordinate with them, you know, in advance so that you might schedule your class on a different day? If it conflicted or at least you try to coordinate with them?
Oh, well, you know, certainly. We have some flexibility in our schedules. You know, as I mentioned. Thursday night seems to be a typical night for our classes, but it's not unheard of if we had the class on a, on a Tuesday or Wednesday. We do try to set our classes in advance, you know, thirty to sixty days and we'll, we'll post it on our calendar there. But, you know, we certainly don't want a parking problem in the, in the shopping center because, you know, if. Our customers are coming and there's no parking spaces, they will leave and that certainly impacts us. So it certainly behooves us to, you know, coordinate with the, with the folks that might be having other events there.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
So do you use shopping carts?
Yes.
And so usually when people leave shopping car, have shopping carts and take things out to their car. They just leave them. How do you deal with that?
We do like many other, you know, grocery stores. We have employees assigned to make sure that our, you know, shopping carts. Aren't all over the parking lot. It does not behoove us to have a. Shopping carts all over. It takes away parking spaces. It, it, it kinda ruins the presentation of the experience that we're looking to offer. And we have customers that, that need those, so we can't afford to have. A lot of those out in the parking lot at any one time.
So I'm thinking of that shopping center. Usually if there's a supermarket, they have kind of corrals where the shopping carts go. Are you gonna have that?
I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know the answers to that particular question. I don't know. I, I'm trying to think of the one that's by my, by my home. And I do believe that there is some type of shopping cart corral by the one that's at my home. But, you know, maybe Phil or Catherine that are on the Zoom call might be able to answer that question a little bit better for you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Margaret. So where do you guys go from here? You've got the, the owners or the corporate people that wanna make a presentation or the property owner or who's gonna? I'm asking the gentleman up at the microphone here. So who's gonna go next?
Can we see if Phil or Catherine have their hands raised?
They're both on the call. I can. Promote them so they can be seen and heard.
Okay, it's up to the, the applicant who wants to go next. I don't know who that is.
Well, I would like to kinda, you know, give Phil and Catherine an opportunity. And then I, I think Jack might wanna offer a couple more words and then that's, that's kinda our presentation.
All right.
I see him on the call. They should be rejoining shortly.
Well, in the meantime, Jack, do you have a couple things that you would like to add to the presentation?
Members of the commission, my name's Jack Jakowski. I'm the owner of the shopping center. And we are extremely excited to, to have Total Wine. You know, to answer an earlier question from Mr. Kenny. He wanted to know if the other tenants in the center were enthused about it. I can assure you without question they are. You know, we've gone thirty-five years with two tenants on that north end of the center. Co-op Market and then Any Mountain. So we've, we've been laboring here since two thousand twenty-one when Any Mountain went out. For those of you that don't know, Any Mountain was owned by Vale Ski Resorts. And they just concluded that they could handle all of their customer activity at the base of the mountain. Rather than, or online rather than the store. So there were only two remaining locations in the Bay Area and ours was one. And, and unfortunately it closed. So, you know, we've been. Like the eight, eight cylinder car running on four cylinders here for the last eighteen months. It's taken a while to go through a number of tenants, candidates that we felt would. Really add something that we could build around. And we're thrilled with, with Total Wine. Mr. Bundy, you'd asked about the, the entry facade. That was really done specific to Any Mountain to give it kind of a chalet type look. About eight years ago, we, when we renovated the island building, the book passage is, is in, we put a new face on that. And so what Total Wine, the shape will be mirror that. The shingled, just shifting a bit away from chalet to. Something other than that. But everybody's thrilled when we're hopeful that. You folks will look favorably upon the request tonight so we can continue to, to move forward and get the store open. Think I ask any questions?
Okay, yes, we're gonna ask you some questions. Daniel, do you have any questions for this gentleman?
No questions.
Doctor Bunny, none?
I was just curious, the, the two spaces that are getting absorbed into this lease, the LOD, is it? How big were they? The, the Pilate Studio and they were just tucked in the back, correct?
Yoga was four thousand square feet and Arch Rival was twenty-seven hundred square feet.
Twenty-seven hundred.
And the yoga were relocating.
Oh, so they're staying in the center?
Yes, staying in the center, just being repositioned on the other side of Book Passage. And Arch Rival, who has a, an existing store in Mill Valley, is just consolidating back to one store.
Are, are they moving over to the old restaurant? The old restaurant location?
Arch Rival?
Yeah.
No.
No, he's talking, no, they're, they have a store in Strawberry.
No, I mean, the, the yoga studio.
Not the restaurant space, behind the restaurant space. Jenny Craig used to be the, the tenant.
Okay.
Back there.
Okay, Margaret.
Why can't you get a restaurant to stay there?
It's tough business. And. We hope we're, we're, we're a long way down the road with one right now. And we hope to have a lease signed here in the next couple of weeks. But. You know, I can't control, I can't control all of the, the operators. You know, one operator thought it'd be fun for, to have an establishment for his, his pals to. Come and have cocktails and whatnot. You know, COVID didn't help. The situation. So anyway. I share your, your pain. We'd like to, we think we'll, we'll have one that will be successful and stick around for a while. Okay.
Look forward to it.
And, and I might add Book Passage once that too, because you were talking about their author events and whatnot and collaborating. They, they can definitely use having a restaurant. In the center to, to add more breadth to their author events.
They open later than eight o'clock at night?
Right.
Um, I just wanted to ask you about your plans while we have you here in front of us. You know, for once, the facility there is one story, basically. Have you looked at other growth options over there at that property?
No, you know, I know that. That option is available to us when we went through the rezoning. But we have not to answer your question.
Right. Okay. Fair enough answer, right. Just wondering what you had in mind over there and you wanna keep it the way it is.
Preferably.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So thank you, Jack.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna have water leaks like some of our neighbors.
Yeah, right. Well, that's comes with territory. So we've got a couple of people online. Chrissy, would you like to introduce these folks?
We have Paul Armstrong and, and Catherine Hunsinger. They're both representatives from Total Wine. Corporate side. I believe they're both on the real estate part of the organization. I'll let them. Share their exact titles, so I don't get it wrong.
Well, you guys are important to this application. So what would you like to say and who wants to start?
I'll start. I'm Phil Armstrong. I am Senior Vice President of Real Estate for Total Wine. Very appreciative of the opportunity to speak to you tonight. A couple of points that I wanted to address on some of the questions. Specifically as to why Corder Madera? Well. We look around and we see some just fantastic demographics. Our, our business is very wine-sucking. So we have, you know, sixty percent of our, our business in Marin County will be in. And this is a, a great venue for us to be in. You've got easy access off of one-on-one. You've got abundant parking at a site. You've got a very iconic and unique co-tenant in Passage Books. That matches our customer in terms of, of who's coming in and shopping. There's nearby retail that we associate with. Down the street at Townsend or Corder Madera, across the one-on-one at the Village of Corder Madera. Those are all retailers that we seek to be around. In regard to how we fit in beer, wine and spirits. There hasn't, as Steve mentioned, there hasn't been a great deal of, of loss of, of. You mentioned Colonial Liquors. They're gonna have a very intimate relationship with their customers. So they're, they're gonna know what they wait shop. They're gonna know them by name. Ours is a little bit different version. You're gonna be looking for a big selection, those old world wines that maybe a lot of people don't carry. We face Bevmo up and down the, the state of California, in and Arizona. And in the state of Washington. And we've been able to carve out our niche and our market share with them. We, I wanted to also mention about the shopping carts. There'll be three cart corrals out in the parking lot. And if we do a poor job of managing that, Jack is gonna let us know. And we'll, we'll be able to take note of that. But policing cart corrals is an important part of the store operations. We won't, we, we want them where they should be in the store. And for customers to be available. We'll have, this will be our only store in Marin County. It's, so we, we thought by the location, neighboring tenants, access to one-on-one. And the great demographics, that that's was our key part of our site selection.
Okay, so we'll ask you some, both some questions when you're both done, I think. So please, Catherine, go ahead. Yes.
Sure, I'll simply introduce myself, given that Phil had such thorough remarks. But I'm Katrin Hunsinger, Senior Director of Real Estate at Total Wine. And I also appreciate your time tonight and we look forward to your questions.
Okay. I'm gonna ask these commissioners if they have questions for you. There was a promise of a traffic consultant somewhere on, on board here, right? So.
Yes, he's still here, waiting in the wings.
All right. You might wanna move him over so he can respond to questions. Daniel's got a question for him, so. Go ahead, Daniel.
He'll be joining us one second. Should see him pop up there on the screen.
There we go.
Hello.
Good evening.
Uh, yeah, I. The the traffic analysis basically says we're going to generate less traffic than a grocery store. But it doesn't, for me, it doesn't really answer the question of what's the real traffic impact. And the real traffic impact in this situation, I think, is really going to be the peak hour exits from the store. Uh, you know, particularly left turns and and into the store, left turns in or out of the store. And as was mentioned earlier, this streak gets a lot of traffic trying to avoid one oh one at that time of day. Uh, I mean, normally, I don't know what you look at for your store. We'd say probably sixty percent, a ten percent of the six hundred. Visitors a day might be coming at peak hour. That's sixty cars. I don't know if that makes any sense in 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 your business, but. Whether you thought about that, whether you've looked at. Uh, the actual traffic on the street and exit entrance locations.
Yes, Commissioner. My name is Dennis Billaud. I'm a consulting traffic engineer and licensed in California. I examined customer transaction data that was provided to me by Total Wine and More and determined that. The use most closely resembles a shopping center. And so then what I do is I go to a publication called Trip Generation that's published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And that will provide me peak hour trip generation data. If if you refer to my memo, which is provided in your staff packet, you're correct. In the PM peak hour. I anticipate there'll be a hundred and one trips generated, which means about fifty people, fifty trips in and fifty trips out. So the fifty outbound trips, those would be spread over two driveways. So you'd get about twenty five outbound trips per driveway or. One trip out per driveway about every two minutes and twenty seconds. So I don't anticipate that this use would generate any queuing problems. On site. And in terms of inbound trips, it's it's the exact same. It's it's about fifty inbound trips in the. PM peak hour of traffic in the PM sixty minutes. So fifty trips over sixty minutes coming into two driveways. It's about one trip. Per driveway about every two minutes and twenty seconds. So. Given that, I do not anticipate that it would generate any kind of a queuing issue onto the public street. So I think there'll be sufficient gaps in the traffic and that the. The trips would be spread over that peak hour of, and it's the peak hour of. The traffic on the adjacent street, not the peak hour of. Trip generation for the business itself, but it's actually the the peak hour of of the of the rush hour traffic.
And then that's trips generated by Total. Total Wine, but then there's other trips in the in and out of that shopping center during the same peak.
Yes, that's correct. And I I did think about that. Given the variety and mixture of tenants there. I do not, I my opinion is I don't think it's going to generate any kind of an issue with in terms of. Queuing problems. For instance, we have the. You know, the the bunt cake vendor. I don't know that their PM peak hour profile would match. The profile of Total Wine and More. So and given the. Total Wine and More is only fifty inbound and fifty outbound trips in that PM peak, even if you. Double that and stack on the other uses on site. You'd still have more than you still a gap of more than one minute per car inbound or outbound, and that's more than sufficient. And I would not anticipate that it would generate actual queuing onsite or offsite and disturb traffic patterns.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Okay, just a sec. Yeah, we'll get there. Bob, did you have any questions for this gentleman or these guys?
No.
Okay. Go ahead, Margaret.
Did you. Actually visit the site?
No, I'm I'm down in Southern California, but I can tell you I did extensive research doing a lot of internet sleuthing in Google Earth. I've been to several other Total Wine and More sites, but I haven't been to this specific site.
Uh, okay. That's. Interesting. I don't have any other question.
Jim.
Only question I I have about the the traffic is, does it does the traffic. Volume compared to a supermarket as it was in its prior use? As far as the the volume of traffic, I'm just curious, because if this was a supermarket, we were, we wouldn't be reviewing it, but. Because it's not a conditional use, but I'm just curious about the amount of traffic. Just call it a smaller supermarket would generate.
Well, actually, it generates less trips than a supermarket. Supermarkets, it kind of. Thinking about number of trips, supermarkets generate more trips than like, say, a shopping center. Because the. You don't have that that PM rush where people are going grocery shopping, for instance. It's more of a stratified demand over over the day. So and I verified that using the customer data at other Total Wine and More's. To make sure that, and it certainly, Total Wine and More certainly does not emulate. The chip generation rate of, let's say, a liquor store. A liquor store obviously has very high turnover with, you know, grab and grow products. And that's certainly not the the way this place operates. So I had to find the appropriate. Land use category within the Institute of Transportationers publication. And the the customer data that was provided to me. Really closely resembles a shopping center. It it's it's actually almost exact, actually. Because as the other commissioner mentioned, if you look at the the trip generation over the twenty four hour period. Typically, the PM peak is ten percent of that, and it's it's almost like right on the money. When I examine the data, so I so I knew that I was selecting the correct one.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you. When you were reviewing this with Tracy, did she provide you with any kind of the other traffic? Studies that were done for the apartment complex down the street? No, she's shaking her head. Or any other vicinity studies for the hotel or anything? Okay. Because they.
No, not on that. But but I will say that the the city's. Traffic engineer reviewed my study in a very robust manner. We had a couple of Zoom calls, some back and forth to make sure that. They felt that my study completely documented the operation and was able to support the the finding that you'll need to make.
Okay. All right. Do you guys want to contribute anything else to this discussion before we close up your presentation and go to public comment?
No, but thank you very much for letting me present.
Okay, that's great. All right. So that's what we'll do then. We'll call this presentation complete for now, not that you're off the hook for questions down the road. But we will now go to public comment. For those in the room who want to make a public comment, we have a timer here. You'll have three minutes to stand up, make a comment. Tracy has probably got some people online as well. This point.
Yes, Tracy.
Okay.
Juliet. Juliet Regusa, you should be able to unmute yourself and speak.
Hi, thank you so much. I am a resident of Casa Madera directly across the street from the complex. And my unit looks directly onto the complex. So I just want to say that. I know you guys are talking about you did the studies of the parking and and the traffic. I can tell you. We will have issues. I wake up every morning and the lot is already full from the yoga studio. So and that doesn't clear out till about ten or ten thirty. So if you have ten to fifteen people per shift, I think you're going to run to issues there. The other thing is, this I received the signage. Information a while ago when that was presented. I just want to make sure that that is going to be look like brick. But I want to make sure that it will stay in compliance and look like the shingles and stuff that are on the building itself. So it doesn't look so out of place. I think that's what you said tonight, but I'm not quite sure. The other big thing is the shopping carts with the bar. So you're obviously going to take up more spots with the corrals for the carts. I hope that is designed in a way that is. Not just ugly metal things, because we want to keep the integrity of the complex itself, because it's it's right in our neighborhood. And my question is, where are the shopping carts kept? Are they outside for people to take or are they inside the store?
Okay, we'll get that answer for you from the panel shortly. But anything else you want to use your time for?
I think no, I think my concerns are just the parking. Oh, and the hours. I I can't believe you would want to go past nine o'clock. That's like he said before, it's completely dead at that time. So and we're just worried about noise. Oh, and then also the deliveries early in the morning, would those all take place at the back? East, north area so that it's not in front and not causing noise in front of our complex.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I forgot to time her, so. So we can take, how many more do you have, Tracy, on? I was going to alternate between a podium and online if you have.
I don't see any hands raised right now.
Okay, all right. Who would like to make a comment? Please step up to the microphone. Yes.
A few questions. Hi, I'm Valerie Bishoyer, and I'm also resident of Casa Madera. And and I have three questions. So one of the questions, whether. There will be any environmental efforts that will be implemented for the tenant improvement for the buildings? Like lead, uh, lead certification for retail or anything like that that could improve. The building itself. Another question is, you mentioned about the giving some shelf space for the local businesses. What percentage would you say? You are giving out being a larger retailer. I'm sure you're carrying large brands. So just kind of curious to know what percentage you have in comparison to the larger brands. And also another environmental questions in regards to the preferred parking spots. For the electrical vehicles, do you have any plans to install the chargers also in the parking spot? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hopefully. You guys took notes of those questions? Good. All right. Anyone else want to stand up and make a comment or ask questions? I don't see anyone. We have some letters that arrived today. Is that correct?
Yes, for Dan today.
Today, they're a part of the record. From. Casey Pennelli, is that correct? And from Juliette Regusa, so. It's Casey here tonight? No. Do you want to read that since? Is it live tonight or do you have it to? We have a copy here. We can give you our copy. Yeah, right.
This is a letter dated January twenty third from a resident by the name of Casey O'Neil. Says, good morning. We have lived at one thirty San Piper Circle for almost ten years and love Quarter Madera and have a seven year old son who we are trying to raise in wholesome and safe environment. We are very concerned and against another liquor store being brought to our community. The town needs to stop this application in the interest of safety and community. Please no big box booze on our residential streets. Number one, the following liquor locations exist already in Quarter Madera. How many liquor stores do we need? Is this Quarter Madera's new reputation? Quote, hey, we need more booze. Where should we go? Quarter Madera, they have all the liquor stores. A Bevmo, B Trader Joe's, C Safeway, D Rite Aid, E Nugget, F Paradise Local Business, G Colonial Local Business. Number two, there is a school in this property. Is it at all appropriate or even legal to have a liquor store in vicinity to children? Same goes for Hall and Redwood High, whose students walk this path. This center has always been smaller stores and almost all health related still is true. It is unfortunate that any mountain went out of business, and I'm sure the landlord just wants any money they can get, but switching to a big box liquor store shows no care for the community. This is not a big box area of town, and this is not a liquor store area of town. Number four, this is a quiet neighborhood, especially at night. We understand the store will stay stay open until ten. Who buys liquor at night? Drunk people. This is a residential neighborhood. This is way too late. Four A, when our when our delivery is being made, this is a quiet neighborhood. These have to be limited. Five, signage, big lighted red signs shining in the windows of residences. This is a terrible disrespect to the neighbors. Six, look at where all other Total Wine locations are in the Bay Area. Big box shopping centers. This is inappropriate in our location. Please protect our community. Do not let Total Wine come to this location.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So you have no other hands raised or you do have one?
I do have a hand raised and a second letter that came today this morning.
Okay.
I'll read that since it's brief.
Okay.
This is from. I'm sorry, I think Juliette already spoke. There is an additional hand raised on the Zoom. That's Laurel Freakinbaum. Laura, go ahead and unmute yourself when you're ready.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Casa Madera area too. And I second the. The previous. Resident who feels, I feel the same way that. That Quarter Madera is really becoming the liquor. What, center of Marin? And I don't have to go through that we have. It's interesting to me. This is called Total Wine and More, and we've got Bevmo and More. So what more do we need? It's certainly not needed if that was one of the criteria. Because there's also Trader Joe's that has wine and tasting. And I know, you know, it's been very good presentations, and I know that it does offer. Classes, which is probably an interesting thing for a number of people. But I really feel it's not what that shopping center and our community needs. So. That's that's my feeling on it, and I appreciate the opportunity to express it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So. No more hands raised, no more letters, no more emails, no more hands raised here.
No more.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment section of this and turn it back over to the presenters to answer those questions that were asked of them. So. Who wants to field these?
I might be able to address a few of them, but I am going to look for Phil to address a couple of of those in terms of. You know, lead designs on our stores as well as a percentage of self-space to locals. I'll defer those to Phil's, but a couple of comments on on some of those. On on some of the points that were brought up. We don't consider ourselves necessarily to be a big box. I mean, we are, you know, twenty thousand square feet, and that is not much larger than, say, a CVS. Pharmacy, which is somewhere between fifteen thousand and twenty thousand square feet, and there are, and their focus. Is on neighborhoods, and they do go into neighborhood type of shopping centers like this all the time. And so we feel like this is not. Some big mega box. You know, I think a big box, I think of, you know, Home Depot and Lowe's and and those types of places. This is more of a specialty retailer. And in being at twenty thousand square feet, it's it's again, not necessarily larger than. Something that we would consider to be much more neighborhood, which would be a a CVS. Um, there was also a little bit of a concern about um, the school. Um, you know, ABC does have um, a, a looked at sensitive uses and uh, they look within six hundred feet. Free schools are not in the category that ABC looks at. They look through, you know, K through and um, you know, K through high school. Um, and part of that reason is is that because of this type of school, it's a very, very closely supervised um, situation and children are not allowed to just leave and go walk home. You know, these are three and four year olds and it's parents that are picking them up and there is um, you know, parents have to show up and sign children out. And so it's a very controlled atmosphere. So there wouldn't be any opportunity for a child to just walk by um, this, this store or any other store, hopefully, if the uh, facility is being managed correctly. In terms of, um, there's one other thing here. Um, yeah, in terms of signage, um, the shopping center did go through a sign program that was approved. It was back in two thousand and thirteen. And obviously whatever signage we put up there, we'll have to conform that and that will be done under a separate permit and submitted to the planning department to make sure that we do conform um, to that sign program. I think that was kind of it. Maybe Phil, you could help out with uh, Phil or Catherine, you could help out with a couple of those other questions.
One of the questions was um, uh, the Tesla chargers or electric, excuse me, electric vehicle charging out there in front. Another one was uh, shelf space for uh, local uh, businesses, local uh, breweries or what you, what have you.
Right. The craft, yeah, the craft brew. Um, uh, Phil, maybe, could you give us a, uh, maybe an idea of how much uh, area that we we dedicate toward, you know, the craft brews?
Well, would depend, uh, you know, it'll be through for for beer, wine and spirits. So, you know, small producers of wine, small producers of spirits, small producers of beer. So I, I, to to get a specific number, it's probably going to be collectively of those three merchandise categories around thirty to forty percent, um, depending on how you define craft. So our merchants do reach out and they will particularly on the beer side. Marin County Brewers or or locals uh, to the Bay Area and be sure that they uh, are able to have space here. The, the electric charging stations is a, is not a tenant specific requirement. That would be part of uh, the shopping center and that would be, you know, something for Jack and the ownership of the center to to consider. That's not a, a total wine specific issue. There was a question on loading. All loading would be done through uh, through at at the loading dock area. Total Wine does not take any deliveries through the front door uh, at any time. So everything is done back of house, so to speak. Tenant improvements. You know, we're going to have industry standard and up to date and uh, kind of you know, a very well done tenant improvement fit out. Leeds is certainly part of it and that's, that's part of our overall design and plan. I can't speak specifically to the issue that uh, the the questioner had, but I I know we're definitely going to improve the quality, to update it and to make sure it's uh, at California building standards.
Okay.
I was just going to mention that our cart, our, excuse me, our shopping carts are certainly stored inside the store. Um, and we will, those cart corrals that Phil mentioned, those are a painted galvanized metal with a low profile. So this is again in keeping with the um, the look of the shopping center.
It it'll say return to DMV on them, right? Okay, so.
Sorry, Peter.
Go ahead.
Um, a question, so the corrals, are they at the end caps of the park? Are they going to take a parking space up or or do they live on the end caps of of uh, the parking aisles?
There, they would take up a parking space.
So we're going to lose three parking spaces?
That's a question for you, you guys. Uh, we're going to lose some of the allocated traffic spaces in the parking lot for carts.
We have discussed the use of up to three cart corrals in three parking spaces.
And the charging say waiting until the space got occupied and then make an assessment as to where the best place to put them would be. But we in fully intend to do that. I think there was another comment about the uh, the facade of Total Wine and continuing on with the the shingled look. Uh, absolutely, that is the case. We're not deviating in any way, shape or form from that material.
Okay. Um, any other questions?
I I just had a question about when the lights go out on the signage, because I know that that was brought up by one of the neighbors. Is there, since I'm not familiar with the signage criteria specifically?
Yes, uh, close the business or eleven P M, whichever is later. That's how our code reads.
Yeah, that's similar to the town center, correct?
Yes, exact same.
Thank you. And we as, just to reaffirm, we have a master sign program for the center. It's it, it's not a free for all out there amongst the tenants. It's, it's um, highly monitored my, by myself to to approve it first and it's got to be approved by the town for a sign permit.
And if that master sign program signage control is more conservative than our code and that that master sign program will control the lighting requirements.
Great. All right. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Anything else over here, gentlemen?
I do have something.
Okay, please speak up.
I'm concerned about the seven A M. delivery time. Uh, particularly given that there's neighbors across the street and I presume those delivery trucks will be backing up into the loading bay. And it's uh, it's a hundred feet plus or one hundred and twenty feet to the property line. And I know from my own personal experience, those beep up signs make a really can can carry very far. So if I were a neighbor across the street and I heard that sound at seven A M. Uh, on either a weekday or even a weekend, I wouldn't be too happy. So do you consider a nine A M. start for delivery?
I think in this case I would have to defer that one to uh, Phil. I I don't know if uh, other stores have delivery hours that start later or not.
I, I think, um, I, I, I appreciate the question for sure and do understand it. Tuesdays and Tuesdays and Fridays are the primary delivery days. Nine o'clock is late because for us, because the store will open shortly. And uh, you know, you do want to have some of that truck activity, not necessarily during customer time. Uh, an eight o'clock limit on deliveries is uh, something I think we could agree to. If that's an improvement over seven. I think we would be able to offer that.
So I, I guess I would like the board to discuss this.
Certainly. Okay, we can consider it as a condition.
A condition.
Yes, we could. All right, thank you.
I'm done.
All right. So with that said, um, we'll close all of this unless we have other hands up or anything else.
I'm seeing none.
Okay. Let's take it back to the diocese here and start to discuss this. Um, I um, want to know if anybody has any further questions for staff. Anybody have anything for staff at this point? No, okay. Um, is everybody clear on what we're after here? Additional use approval, um, nothing else on this application, right? So, Dr. Bundy, I'll start with you.
Uh, yeah, I, I think I would uh, agree that this uh, really isn't a big box store that it's going into uh, the marketplace that's been there since the seventies, you know, has uh, a nice facade. Uh, it is uh, you know, set back, uh, so any noise associated with it will be minimized, I believe. Uh, and I know the neighbors have some concerns about uh, just, I, I think the change. You know, what does this really mean? Uh, I don't think uh, Total Wine and More is the same as just a another liquor store going in. It is a destination and uh, uh, it will certainly attract uh, uh, clients from around the uh, uh, around Marin County. So while they, they have some concerns, I don't think those will be borne out and I can make all the findings.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Um, Mr. Rizzo.
I think for me, it was more about a making sure we have enough parking. Little concerned about the um, being open till ten o'clock. I have to say it. I don't, I don't know anything that's really going on at ten o'clock and um, maybe that'll pan out in the, by operations, but uh, uh, we could also consider a nine P M. Condition of approval, just because there's nothing open that late. Uh, just being so close to uh, the residential, I mean, it's right across the street. I, I wish it was a little further away. Um, I don't have a problem with the use. Uh, I, I believe that uh, uh, definitely is a specialty. It, it's a destination. Um, it just was a supermarket before and one of the reason I asked about the traffic of the supermarket could become a supermarket again. Um, and it wouldn't be, uh, it'd be a by right, wouldn't be a conditional use and we'd be looking at even more traffic. So I, I, I really don't have, I have trouble like, and I, and I kind of agree. I don't, I don't really think of this as, as, as a big boxes. Even though it is twenty thousand square foot space, um, definitely a specialty. Um, and I went over the, the code uh, with Tracy a few times with con, with what conditional use means for our town and and it I, I could make all the findings from what I can read about any of the ordinances and the codes and what we're trying to accomplish here today. Because we're just talking about the conditional use. And that's what we're voting on, but I, but I do think we should take some consideration and talk about and discuss the ten o'clock opening. I don't really.
Ten o'clock closing?
I mean, ten o'clock closing. Um, and I, I do agree with the eight, the eight A M. Uh, I used to have a paint store across the street and I used to get six A M. Deliveries and the cans are going and, you know, it's like trash every day. So, um, I think that would be definitely, I could support that uh, consideration if, if they would um, do their deliveries at eight A M. and rather than seven A M. And uh, I'll definitely look at gopuff.com, what a name. See what the, what that's all about. Um, sounds like it, we might not even have that Bevmo much longer if if that's their business plan and that's what uh, we're seeing happen nationally. So we could probably see uh, another liquor store leave. Um, the I've been, I've, I've, I've been a patron of this store and they definitely do have a lot of specialty wines and spirits that you wouldn't be able to find anywhere else. So I do think that their clientele is a little bit different than the corner store, the Safeway. Um, the world markets and and every other little corner establishment that we have. So, um, I'm with Dr. Bundy. I think I could support this uh, conditional use with perhaps some conditions.
Okay, good. We'll get back to those possible conditions. Uh, thank you. Uh, Daniel, your thoughts about this?
I, I agree.
Should be voice actuated, Jim. It was a twenty person. I agree that I, I don't see this as a big box establishment in this particular center. Uh, I think, uh, I think it will, uh, the vacancy uh, is not positive for the other tenants in the shopping center or Corder Madera. And I think the ability to, to support the other uh, tenants in the shopping center and the synergy potentially uh, is positive. Uh, I do think it is somewhat different than the, the, the marketing concept, the, the concept that they develop is somewhat different in terms of the, that people are not likely to run in and grab a bottle of wine and leave, but they're going to be, you know, shopping for you know, particular brand of wine or varietal or whatever. And I, I haven't seen the uh, design review application, but uh, from what's been said here, it sounds like uh, the modifications will still keep it consistent with the rest of the shopping center. I feel that um, the response from uh, the traffic consultant was more encouraging, my concerns about traffic and particularly, uh, you know, the fact that the town has also reviewed it and uh, feels consistent. Uh, I am concerned about parking relative to, as I mentioned before, the, the um, book passage events, but I think uh, clearly it'll be their own interest to make sure those events are coordinated if it, if it becomes a problem. And uh, and I, I feel pretty strongly about, about the um, not so much about the closing time, although I would support that, changing it to nine o'clock, but the, the delivery time. Uh, and I'm sure if we wanted it to be nine o'clock, they'd probably still go forward with this deal. So I think uh, if, if we, I, 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 you know, it may be fine, but I don't know if anybody else has any particular feelings about the eight o'clock or not, but I think that would be a condition as a minimum I would support. So I'm in favor.
Okay. Good. So we'll talk about open uh, or closed time and traffic uh, uh, delivery times. Um, Margaret, time for you to time in here.
Well, I agree with a lot of what's been said. I, I don't think it's a big box store. Um, and I think it's very good to support the other uh, businesses in the shopping center by filling in empty spaces. There are a lot of empty spaces in all the shopping centers after the pandemic and I think that the, the better we can encourage that filling in, the better our town is going to end up being. However, I think it was a huge oversight to not have the uh, traffic person come and see the site and be there. It's a very unique location. And the numbers may match other situations, but you have the gym there, you have the DMV there, you have Redwood High School traffic there and you have an apartment complex there. That's a lot of cars going by and if you compare that to the Bevmo site, which is this, almost the same, it's that kind of shopping center. It has two entrances and exits. You always wait and backed up to get out of there and make a left turn or even a right turn onto the highway. And um, I think it was um, really not a complete kind of um, survey of what that traffic situation is going to be. Um, and I, I think it's going to be a problem. I'm kind of concerned about that sale of cigars there, but that's just a minor, minor thing in my own. I do support it closing earlier. I don't know that I support the unloading of um, the deliveries uh, are normally at seven and, and to tell you the truth, that's what's allowed in residential areas across the street from my house and I hear the backup all the time of the unloading at seven in the morning. So I don't think it's uh, that's a necessary kind of uh, restriction, but closing early is, I think, a good idea. Um, again, I think it was really a huge oversight not to look more carefully at the traffic. However, I would, I would support the uh, conditional use permit because I think it's However, I would, I would support the conditional use permit because I think it's. A good idea to have this space filled in.
Yeah, thank you. I would agree with the comments that have been made here in general. I think that it's very important to get this center filled in. Adversely, I also worry that a single business taking over such a large space. Is like a, you know, behemoth coming in, occupying the space, and if it doesn't work out. Then you're empty of that space for a long time as well, but it's all empty now as it is, frankly, so. This would be an improvement. Anytime a large store leaves a space, it just stays empty for what seems like forever. But this, it, it would be good to see this occupied with a vital business. That it may be for the community and at large as well. I think the other businesses are much more local. This will be a little larger, you know, net thrown out. I don't think that this is a. Irresponsible or in any way. Inappropriate use for that space. I think it's, it's perfectly fine. I think that having a, a good provider of. Quality beverages is above the Bevmo level. I think it is a good thing for the community in the area. You know, right now you have to travel far and wide to get quality wine anywhere else usually. Have to go to Mill Valley Market. And pay those prices. So I think that having deliveries in the morning is appropriate. Because the delivery trucks can't get in there, frankly, with all the yoga parkers there and the daily parkers there. Those trucks are going to need to navigate that parking lot and get in there and get out. Otherwise, I think they themselves will cause a traffic jam in there with the larger trucks. Yes, in a minute, in a minute. Yes, thank you, Jack. In a minute. Yeah, we'll get to. I, the concerns about signs, I think, are mitigated by the discussion with the sign program and so forth that don't follow. The restrictions, everything will be clearly submitted and follow the rules of the road to get those done. I know years ago when we approved another sign out there, they go off at night the way they're supposed to on the highway side. Unlike Creighton Barrel, but they, they do go off as promised. So. You know, I had my. Concerns and misgivings, but I can make the findings for this, but Jack, please step up to the microphone or handle. She's got one right behind you there. You can stay seated practically.
Just to your comment on with deliveries and, and early morning yoga classes. You know, keep in mind that yoga is moving to the south side of the center. So. There'll be a shift of. Morning. Early morning parking stalls to the south.
Okay.
If that. Eases your concerns at all.
I don't know. When I drive by at. Six fifteen or six thirty coming from my workout, I see the lot is full, you know, practically, so seven, by seven, it's full up. Of yoga.
They're popular.
Thank you. Do the corporate folks want to respond to anything that was stated here? Are they offline?
Phil is still here.
Okay.
They're both here.
Phil, so we've talked about a earlier closure time and we've talked about delivery time, so. Talk, respond to the request for a earlier closure, closure time.
All our other stores in the Bay Area are open till ten, so that is why we presented that. That. Closing hour because it's consistent with what we have in, in other places in the Bay Area. We don't do very much business at, at those late hours. A lot of that is just. Kind of cleaning up the store and getting it in shape. For the following day and, and picking up after today's, today's sales. I mean. I'm, if, if you ask me if will I agree to a nine. P M closing, I would, I wouldn't. If, if that's. Helps the board make the decision, we can make that concession.
Okay. All right. Anything else you would care to respond to that we talked about?
Well, and, and the loading, I think you, you do want to get the, the point you made, you do want to get trucks in and out of there before the. The balance of the summer opens up. The yoga patrons aside. Eight o'clock would be. A, a minimum for us as well. We would not want to be restricted later.
Okay. All right, thank you. So. We've got your input. Thank you. And so I think it's time to consider a motion. So we would have a motion with or without the closure time. We can, someone could put forth the straight up motion without that early closure time as a condition of approval. Or we can add that on.
What about? What about the eight A M loading time?
That too can go on there. If you wish to make a motion with that added on as a condition of approval. So, Bob, you got your hand up?
I was gonna make a motion for a clean approval of item five A seventy one Tamil Vista Boulevard. Conditional use permit application, P L two, two, oh, oh, five, nine for a proposed. Total Wine and More Store at seventy one Tamil Vista Boulevard at the Marketplace Shopping Center.
Okay, so that said, before we ask for a second, then Daniel, you could go ahead and make a motion with an amendment if you wish.
Yeah, I'd like to amend that motion with a condition approval for a eight A M delivery start. Start of deliveries.
Can, can I clarify something?
Yes.
There is an existing condition of approval for hours, so I think we could just modify that existing condition to change delivery or closing time.
Good point.
Condition number four. Number four on page five of the resolution.
So how does that get read into the record?
You'd make a motion to approve with a, a recommendation to modify condition of approval number four with the preferred. Open time of eight A M instead of seven A M. Delivery time, sorry.
And so could we? Can we amend that for the closing hour too?
Yes, you may. Yes.
Then I would. Make an amendment or propose an amendment that the store be closed. At nine P M. On Monday through Saturday. Sunday, it's already at nine.
Okay, so we have three varieties in front of us. We can take the clean one, we could take a single modification or we could do it with both modifications. So. Margaret, you would propose to have both modifications in there, is that right? Just the morning, the closing.
You don't care about deliveries.
Okay, all right. So, that said, Daniel.
I'm, I'm okay with. Both modifications. And I'm okay with just the delivery time change.
Okay. Now, wait a minute. So if we, if we accept the closure time. And you would be for both conditions on there, right?
Yes.
Would you be okay with just the closure time and not the delivery time in the morning?
No.
Just a point of order, you, you might want to just take. Each modification and vote on each modification individually and then if they carry, then you can make the. Approval based on the route of the modifications.
Got it, okay.
I got one comment before I just, I just recalled, when does Redwood start in the morning? Would the later. Timeframe actually. Be more problematic to that traffic corridor. With a big truck. Does anybody know?
I know.
I don't have a kid that.
All starts at eight fifteen. I believe Redwood is fifteen minutes later.
So. We're going to be right in the middle of traffic then. Maybe, maybe it is better to start earlier. Just thinking through it, not if we're worried about peak times. Okay, I, I, I just.
Thank you, Jim. So we can take the. Clean motion here. And see if we have a second on that and then vote for, take a vote for that.
Okay, well. I will second the clean motion and then we can vote on the other two. Is that what you're saying?
Well, we, we'll have to vote on this one, right? Vote on the clean motion without anything attached to it, so then we would. If, if it fails, then we would have to go on to the other two motions, right?
Oh, you don't move on and let it fails, is that right?
I mean, it's, it's council's. Pleasure how they want to move forward, but you might, it might be easiest to, to. Take a vote on the modifications and then you can do a final motion approving with whatever modifications. Were carried.
Okay. All right, so we've got. All right, so we've got a. A, a motion for both modifications, early morning and evening closure, so. We can start there. We have one motion that is just the. Warning.
I guess to be a point of order would be if we combine these two motions. We might get more votes.
You might, right, so.
Does that complicate things?
No, so.
And if it fails, we can go back to one at a time.
Right, so let's get this over with here. If we, if we start with both on the table, let's take a call here. Let's take a roll. On this, both on the table, the morning, eight o'clock limitation and the nine o'clock closing time.
Okay, Commissioner Kenny.
Yeah, I.
Commissioner Bundy.
No.
Chair Chase.
No.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
No.
Commissioner Bandell.
No.
Motion fails.
Okay, so then we'll go on to. Just the.
Closing. Well, of that, oh, okay. All right.
So you made the motion for the morning.
The morning. Delivery starting at eight A M.
Right.
I vote I.
Okay, you voted I. So we'll go ahead with the roll call for that motion, which is just a limitation of the morning delivery time.
Okay, Commissioner Kenny.
I.
Commissioner Bundy.
No.
Chair Chase.
No.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
No.
Commissioner Bandell. Motion. Tonight or fails.
Okay. So. Then we're down to a closure time. At nine o'clock, right? Okay, so emotion, you're making a motion to. You made the motion for operation hours to be limited to nine, to nine P M Monday through Saturday.
Right.
Okay. Roll call.
Is there a second?
We have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Kenny.
No.
Commissioner Bundy.
No.
Chair Chase. Vice Chair Rizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. So now. We're left with the clean motion at this point. So we had Bob Bundy making a motion for that. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so let's take a roll call.
Commissioner Kenny.
I.
Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Chair Chase.
Yes.
Vice Chair Rizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bandell.
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes.
There you have it. Thank you very much for your help. All right. Are there any appeal rights with this thing?
These decision of the planning commission. At a public hearing or meeting. May be appealed to the town council within ten calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department. At Corte Madera Town Hall or on our website and a three hundred dollar filing fee is required.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Good luck with this. Yes, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to take a short break and we'll be back here to talk about one oh six Walnut Avenue. Thank you. We're back now. All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody online listening or watching? No.
We have five attendees.
Wow.
Listening in.
Okay, great. Welcome back. So we're here to continue this meeting and we're here to talk about one oh six Walnut Avenue. This is a preliminary review application to construct a twenty six hundred eighty seven square foot two level home. Over a seven hundred and fifty six square foot garage utility room on the existing vacant lot at one oh six Walnut Avenue. So we're not going to take any action, but we're going to give you feedback tonight and. Phil, do you want to start up on this one?
Yes, thank you, gentlemen, Chase. Good evening, members of the planning commission and, and audience. As Commissioner Chase mentioned, this is just a preliminary review or study session for an application that wishes to. Build a new single family home on a vacant lot at one oh six Walnut. This parcel has been vacant since day one, has never been occupied by a home. There was a similar application that went through the town and the planning commission back in two thousand fourteen. And at that point, it went through one tiny commission hearing and it was basically sent back. And the applicant never returned. And since that, that was in two thousand fourteen, and since then it sat vacant and now this application has come before you. If you, you're through the staff report and the plans, you can probably see it's quite a unique lot, incredibly steep. Both sloping towards the street as well as to the north. And has quite a narrow frontage approximately twenty five feet. And then the rear property line is only sixty feet wide. You've got twenty five feet in the front, sixty feet in the back and long, long, narrow lot. I get this parcel because of its steepness. Needs to comply with, not the parcel, the development needs to comply with a section of our code, which is eighteen oh. Eight point two, two, zero, which says that there are increased side yard setbacks for properties. With slopes that exceed ten percent, as is the case with this lot. So that's why on the, if you, if you're looking up at the lot, on the right hand side. You have a very jagged setback line that they need to comply with and the applicants have, have complied with that. Added setback requirement. There is some, we've had some discussion regarding one of the eaves. And that appears to be hanging over into the setback. And so they'll, they will address that and they're agreed to modify that eve, so no variance will be required for that. As well as, since the writing of the staff report, they have spoken with a neighbor and modified the front deck. To. Compensate and basically address her concerns regarding privacy and I'll, I'll let the applicant talk more detail about that. So again, this is a study session and that basically concludes my brief. Reports along with my brief staff report, there is a history. I've given an overview of the neighborhood outreach that they have provided and they've reached out to quite a number of neighbors. They provided a, a table showing all the neighbors they've spoken with. And I have had a couple of phone calls with neighbors, but I've received nothing in writing. And I think some of those neighbors may be here this evening. So that concludes my report and welcome any questions that you may have. And I will have the, put the plans up on the screen so we can refer to them if you like.
Yeah, please. I recall that twenty fourteen was a much more significant structure, was it, was it not that was proposed?
It, I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but yes, I believe it certainly looked more significant from the, from the visual.
Okay.
But I'll, I'll certainly dig that up and, and find that.
There you go.
For the final. The formal hearing.
All right. Yeah, okay. Alright, yeah, okay, thank you, um, so, uh, commissioners, do you have any questions for Phil before we hear the presentation? Uh, Daniel, do you have anything you wanna ask Phil?
Not at this time.
Okay, Dr. Bundy.
Phil, because of the forty-degree slope, is an EIR required?
No, no, any EIR is not required, uh, you may be thinking of Dr. Bundy, um, and, and to move to the next level, this project is considered exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, um, because it's a development of a, a single-family home. You may be thinking of the project that I'm working on, on Sonora Way, which is the subdivision of land creating and that requires, uh, a secret document, not necessarily an EIR, but a secret document if the land is over twenty percent in slope, which that one is. And this is as well, but this is not a subdivision of land.
Over here, um, Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for Phil?
Um, just that, uh, uh, we did, there, there was a, a project maybe a year ago that did a lot of grading and dug in, uh, so I'm assuming we don't have a, uh, any kind of grading ordinance or amount of excavation that's prohibited. We don't have a, a ma, a minimum and a maximum amount of.
No, we don't.
Grading or anything like that?
No.
That's all I have, really.
Okay. Margaret.
Um, Phil, could you remind me again when this is a two-story house above a garage? And, and it says the maximum height of the home will be approximately twenty feet, that's, could you remind me again, that's measured from where?
Um, maybe Tracy, if you could throw the, the slide up and probably the best one would be the section.
H two, A two-point-two.
Thank you. And actually in a, yeah, in a, in a nerd, actually in, in another version, um, the applicant, so this is, um, um, this, this is not, maybe it's not a great visual to show, cause this is not actually showing it correctly in terms of how height is measured. And what I use, I, I use the potato chip analogy, so this, this, um, this lot is like a potato chip in terms of the formed, it, it drops this way, it drops that way. So in order to determine the height of this building, you take that potato, you take another potato chip that matches it and you rise it up, you raise it up thirty feet. So your height limit is parallel to your grade. And so the building cannot, um, go beyond that second potato chip, that's, that's up in the air, that's thirty feet high. And this building does not do that, so if you.
Their pointer work.
So are you s- So what this looks to me like the top of the grade is the top of the roof level. And that's at twenty feet, so from where?
So how, how we measure height is, if we can see my, my pointer here. So in this particular image, the maximum height of this building is from this point where my pointer is, straight down to grade. So that is the height of, that is the maximum height of this building per the Cordero Madera code. If this was a, if this was a completely flat lot, then we'd be looking at their, their red line over here and we'd be taking this line and we'd just be going straight across and their building would, could not be over thirty feet high, but your height measurement follows the slope of the land.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my potato chip analogy.
Isn't it still thirty feet in the front? Your max height, cause it's graded down, cause the, the finished grade is thirty feet from the bottom of the garage?
No, the, the finished grade is, is measured from the side of the buildings. To the, the grade, the grade that exists along the side of the house, that's your, that's your, that's your grade, but, but, and, and, but to answer your question, Mr. Rizzo, the, the garage, the face of the garage cannot be greater than thirty feet. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a true statement as well.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, Phil?
The, the face of the garage cannot be greater than thirty feet.
Or the face of it.
Yeah.
The width.
The, the, if you're standing at the garage door, you're going straight up, you know, that's.
So if I'm standing on the street where the, where the cars enter the garage.
Correct.
The roof of the top of the house can't be more than thirty feet. Is that right?
No, and, and I'm sorry, I, I spoke incorrectly, I'm, I'm, I'm wrong when I said, when I answer your question, Jim, around the garage. The, the slope, like I said, like I said earlier, the, the slope of the lot is the benchmark, the beginning point you use when measuring the height of the building. And so you take this, you take that, that slope and you go up thirty feet. So it's not if.
So the, the slope of the, the allowable thirty feet is parallel to the slope of the, of the.
Correct, exactly, exactly, yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, my, my garage comment was incorrect. I was thinking it was.
So when you're looking, if you're standing at the street.
Mm-hmm.
And you're looking. Uh, if you're standing at the garage and you're looking up. It's like.
It looks, it looks.
The building is thirty feet going into the top of the hill.
Yes.
Slope. I get it. Thank you.
Right.
A former, yeah.
Yeah, maximum was thirty feet, yeah, so.
Yeah, and I will have the, I will have the applicant.
Right.
Um, you'll redraw this and we, we talked about it and so you'll, you'll have a better visual of how that height is, should be correctly measured. But. Eight-two, A-two-one? I know you guys gave me a s- I think this may be an. Two-point-one?
Lower, lower right?
Okay. But that's correct, yeah.
So, are, are those the correct measurements on the side?
Well, no, I. Uh, no, that is, um, that, I mean, that is a correct measurement, the red, the red line is a correct measurement and that distance is accurate, but that is not the complete story of how we measure height, when, when one is measuring height of a building on a slope is, is best to look at it, um, with the slope dropping left to right or right to, or right to left.
So.
Not face on.
Okay.
Because you're not getting, in this picture, we have no idea what the lot is doing, right, we have no idea whether the lot is flat or anything, and so that's why, um, if this was, if this was a hundred percent flat lot, then this picture would give us the full story.
So. In the staff report, where it says the maximum height of the home will be twenty feet.
Correct.
That doesn't count the garage.
No, no, that does count, that does count the garage, again, my, my statement, I apologize, my statement earlier about the garage was incorrect. My statement, if you go back to the, the second.
But the, to, to.
Is that the, the highest point of the building, um, based upon that, um, side, and that side elevation is approximately, that one right there is approximately twenty feet, the height of the garage in this, in this image is probably five feet. Thank you, Peter, that's twenty feet and the garage.
What about the other elevation?
I understand that and I'm saying the whole deal from the street is thirty feet, is that right?
From her view, from the street.
From the street.
But that's not how it's calculated.
I understand that.
But yes.
Saying.
That's correct.
But Phil, on the other.
It doesn't quite say that in the staff report.
Well, it says, it says, I, maybe I should have put, the maximum height of the building per Cordero Madera's standard of how to measure height is twenty feet. The maximum height of the building, standing at the street um, is thirty feet.
So, so Phil, on the other elevation, it's shown that, the garage is actually not, it doesn't have a retaining wall next to it.
That one there?
Why wouldn't that be considered the maximum height on page A-two-point-one, yeah? So you have the exposed garage with no retaining wall, when you measure it from the, from that garage level?
That would be, so on, in this case, the maximum height.
I'm just saying it should. Yeah, what's the maximum height of the building?
And, and on this elevation, maximum height is gonna be this.
We've been through this a number of times in different meetings and we've talked about this, how Cordero Madera measures height and it's parallel to the ground level and that limit is thirty feet off of parallel ground level. You don't look at the total height of the building from the bottom of the building to the top of the building at the street. You don't measure it that way, he's provided that number over there on the right-hand side that says the total building height happens to be thirty feet, but that's not the way it's measured, he put that there. Um, and the building does have that, but that's not a limitation factor for the building.
Yeah, and I, and I, yes, that's, Peter is correct.
So.
And, and I, again, I will show you after this, the, their form, the, I will, their formal application will be much more succinct and clear, so, um, and I will have them label it in, in such a way to show that.
So two, two-point-two shows a parallel line to the grade, thirty feet going up the side of the hill. Yeah, I understand, you know, right, so, and if you took a parallel line to the top of the existing, of the proposed building, it would be twenty feet, not thirty feet, because you got all that space, so the, the total height measured of the building according to code is twenty feet. Above grade. I wish we could, uh, we, we'll have a study session on this, Margaret, I think. So, um, I get it, uh, it's confusing in time.
But this, this project would, if you, if this was modeled, it would save a lot of questions too.
Right, right.
Because of the grade, it's so difficult.
Right.
In the, in the actual, a physical three-D model?
Well, I, I don't know, program, uh, architects or unions, he's probably got the model already built.
So.
Yeah, there were, there are renderings in the, second to the last sheet.
So, are we ready to move on to a presentation?
I do have a question for.
Okay, Daniel.
Yes.
Saving it up, you know?
Right.
Thank you, it took the pressure off of me there.
Uh, what's the frontage requirement in this zone?
Frontage requirement, the, the front setback is twenty feet.
In this zone? Yeah, wow, yeah, thanks.
Alright. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm, you said frontage requirement?
Yeah.
In terms of the, how wide must a lot?
Tony would say, is this because this is a record lot that you have a twenty-five-foot frontage or is it because that's what the zoning requires?
Um, is cause that's what the, when they created the lot, they, they created it this size.
So it's a lot of record.
Yes.
So it doesn't have to comply with the current frontage requirements?
If, yeah, well, they, um, when the lot was created, um, I would have, I would have to go back and check to see, um, you know, when the lot was created, what was the minimum frontage requirement? Um. Except to Chair Chase.
We'll get to you in a moment, thank you, right, right. Um, so, you're wondering how that frontage came about?
Yes.
Right, so that was part of.
And, and why it complies, I mean.
Beyond our purview here or, or beyond our pay grade range, so.
Yeah, uh, I mean, it could be a lot of record, which means it was created back in the fifties and that was requirement at that time and so it's legal, but it wouldn't be, you know, it would today, if it was non-compete, yeah, that's, I'm just, would like clarity on.
Yeah, and I will, I will bring that, I know, actually Tracy, Tracy did some research on that and, and how this, this little corner got cut off and so, yeah, I will, I will certainly bring that forward.
They probably thought nobody would ever go with it. Yeah. Great.
She will provide some more as well.
Anybody else have, anything else to ask, uh, Phil, okay. So let's move to the presentation from you guys, so who's gonna start up? Okay, great, um, step up to the microphone and, uh.
You can step to that microphone there, and you, do you want the clicker, Gary? Absolutely. That way, uh, left is, right is forward, left is back.
Well, just wanna give a little.
On top of the microphone, if you wouldn't mind, we'll get that turned on, one second.
Okay, cool, thank you, it's a little background on the project and how we approached it, obviously, a very difficult lot, slopes two different directions, major slope up to forty percent. Uh, obviously, it hasn't been developed for, uh, for a reason, just because of difficulty, so we look at the parameters and what we were gonna do. Well, uh, it's a customized house for, uh, Barbara and Dan, uh, to live in, to move into. Uh, we met their criteria, but we also had a number of other criterias, we went back and we actually did go through the records, um, it was the two oh nine to ten when, when that other house was in there and it was a Tudor-ish mass, we read all the comments from the neighbors and the committee at the time and we knew what was, what the issues were. So what was our objective in this house and that's kind of where we started, one of the objective was not to have a variance. So we did the potato chip analysis with Phil, we met with him, I can't tell you how many times, who's great, who worked with us. So we met the requirements of all the setbacks and as you may know, your setbacks are quite unique. Your setbacks vary with the height of the grade and how the building height goes along the grade, so if you look at the plan, you're gonna see an switchback of, uh, setbacks, so that was our, one of our criteria. The criteria was to stay within the thirty feet or less, we wanted less and yes, um, when you look at it in this grade, it does change, as Barbara was saying, is yes, if you look straight on, you have the thirty feet, but that's not how you guys look at it, you guys look at it the potato chip analogy as you go up to where twenty feet, so we're well beyond, well below the height restrictions, well below the FAR. The other issue was massing, you guys or the city and the neighbors had a big issue with how the other one came across with massing, so we broke it up. We broke it up into three parts and we set it into the hillside, because we didn't want the structure dominate, uh, the hillside, the neighbors or the general community, so we broke it up. In addition to setting it back three different levels, obviously, we recessed the back of the house into the hillside, so we kept the height and the massing down, we also broke up the planes, you look at each level, it's not, um, there's no one wall, it's setback with, uh, whether it be, uh, a balcony, terraces, overhangs, so we, we mitigated the impact of the wall, that was another big issue that the neighbors and the commission had way back when. As far as material goes, we also mitigated the impact by using different natural materials on there, as you can see, we have some limestone, we have some stained wood siding, we have some stucco, again, it breaks up the massing of the whole building, so when you look at this from all sides, you're not gonna see just one high wall. We also paterson, some glass and as you can see, we have planters there to soften the front balconies, we also have, um, planting, uh, on the side. Barbara went out, reached out to twenty-six neighbors, after reaching out to twenty-six neighbors, a couple of comments came back. Uh, Phil started off with the comments to limit and mitigate the privacy issue on the right and left side of the house by eliminating the windows, though on the right and left side of the house, basically, we only have high trans and windows or nothing. So that was a comment that Phil had and some of the neighbors had, secondly, uh, another. Secondly, uh, another issue came up was on the, uh, top, on the terrace on the left side. Uh, the neighbor on, on the left side had issues with privacy, so what we're going to do and we talked to, um, Phil about. Was take off that left corner balcony. And put a privacy screen, so you see where that privacy screen is now, we're moving it over and we're eliminating the deck on the left side of the house. So that'll, uh. Address the privacy issue. The top right hand corner, if you look on the right hand picture, you can see that's the corner that. Phil was saying is about eighteen inches over the setback, so what we're going to, yeah, thank you, what we're gonna do there is gonna pull that back. To within the setback requirements, we'll just step it back. Other than that, we've met. All the requirements of setbacks, no variances, well below FAR, well below the, um. Height limits. Also, in the rear, as you can see, way we graded the house, we tried to keep. Within the slope of the lot as best we could, and what I mean by that is. The difficulty with this lot is you have it sloping in two different directions. Top to bottom and from left to right. So how does one mitigate that and how does one lessen the impact? That's how we did the stepped approach. And if you look at some of this section, but this, this shows more visually, how we stepped the house back into the hillside. And it's also set back. On both sides, even the retaining wall, so the. The grading on the right and the left side of the lot basically remains how it is. And then if you can imagine like a horseshoe. Retaining wall going around the whole structure and it's placed inside. Uh, setback inside, uh, the hillside. Those were our objectives, we also mitigated and, and, uh, the massing by having, uh, the glass. And. Barbara can elaborate on, uh, the, uh, individuals, uh, that she spoke to. But we did do, I just wanna emphasize, we did do a lot of research into this before we, we came up with this and we've been working with Phil for. Uh, two months, so this is not the first reiteration, this is probably the. Fourth, fifth, or more reiteration that we've done on this, so we tried to. Proactively mitigate any of the issues. And, and, and present what we thought would address everybody's, uh, feedback. Barbara, did you wanna say anything about, uh, neighbors and in that, in that corner setback, you know?
Yes, please, go ahead.
I'm Barbara Freedman, I'm here with my husband Dan, Gary, you just met, our builder Amir is here with us. This has been, um, a labor of love. It's been very exciting, I'm a novice at this, but I'm certainly learning a lot. And we started this process by. Reading through all the files from ten, twelve years ago. Uh, Tracy was kind enough to give us access to that, so we really designed this house. On the shoulders of our predecessors and all the neighbor complaints and all the neighbor issues took very seriously. Privacy, light, massing, positioning the house on the lot so that. It, it's more agreeable to the neighborhood. We know, I've had several conversations with Donna Killian, the woman who lives next door. Uh, at number one hundred, we've had a lovely, lovely conversation as recently this morning. Uh, her concern about privacy from the upper deck, uh, that. Originally wrapped around to the side of the house facing her. We scaled that back so that upper deck is only facing the street. So the edge of that upper deck is thirteen and a half feet from the property line. And then on her property, she has a driveway that winds up and. You know, she has a pretty wide driveway there. She has a patio, she has a dining area and I certainly understand and, and I'm happy to work with her on finding a way. That she's comfortable with the house that, that we're designing in and that particular, uh. Deck, so we've really, we've tried to learn from our predecessors and, um. Let me, let me comment, oh, excuse me. I, I don't need this. On the lot, on the frontage of the lot, uh, in the title report, it showed that in nineteen fifty four. That front triangle was given to one oh two walnut, for whatever reason, have no idea. But there is documentation in the title report that shows that. So nineteen fifty four. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we appreciate your time, certainly appreciate how patient and helpful Phil has been.
Thank you, um. All right, so, uh, this is an informal session, but we're gonna follow questions to you guys from the commissioners. Uh, and then we're gonna see if any comments wanna be made, uh, public here. And, um, then we'll give you some feedback on this, so, uh. Let me just see if the commissioners here have any questions for these guys. Okay, go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, uh, just in, in looking at everything, uh, what, what is the slope on the driveway going to be going up to the garage?
And may I also add that at the beginning of this process, I spoke to the fire marshal who gave me what the parameters were. For meeting fire code for driveways and setbacks, that sort of thing.
And the other, the other thought is, uh, I was trying to visualize this and. Uh, is the utility pole gonna be to the left of the driveway or is that gonna be? Taken out and undergrounded or what's, what's happening with that?
Uh, the utility pole belongs to one hundred, it, it's, our property starts. Like inches to the right of that pole.
So and that gets, so that gives you room for the driveway to, to go up and do that. And, um, then how, how much, uh? Material do you expect to have to excavate? Any estimate on that yet?
Not yet, we, we're starting to work with the civil, first we wanted to, um. Mitigate or design as much as possible before we had, um, him look at it. We do know that the elevations and the height that we have are generally there, but he's gonna go back and, uh, and, and look at that. And again. It's a, look, the lots look from front to back and side to side, he's gonna have to look at that in, in detail, obviously, a little more to the left. Gets dug out and a little left on the right. We also in the back, we short, just so you know the process that we went through, we had a bigger terrace in the back and, and we pulled it back. And the way we did that was we only have a twelve foot terrace and we have, uh, three, then we have two, uh, three foot retaining wall. A three, six foot retain walls in the back, we did that in order to soften the landscape, keep it blended in and have plantings. In those, uh, retaining walls that are gonna spill out. But again, that. Minimized the impact of, of, of a dig out there.
Okay, uh, as you said, a challenging lot. That's, that's all.
Thank you, Bob, uh, Daniel, do you have any, uh, questions you wanna ask these guys?
Uh, I think you've done a good job giving this lot. I, I'm interested in how you're gonna handle the storm drainage coming down the hill. Uh, and how it works currently relative to how it drains into the street and the drain capacity and then. You know, obviously, those retaining walls, that, you know, the water's gonna be coming down and so just what you're thinking is there.
We have a civil engineer on board, uh, he is going to do a full, uh, we have a soils report already, we have a civil engineer on board, we have a structural engineer on board. As soon as we're done, uh. Here, uh, we're going to have the civil engineer look at the cut and fill, of course, he cuts. And he'll look at the whole drainage system and how it's gonna work, we'll be providing all of that, I did talk to him, um. Number of times, he knows exactly what we're doing, what we tried to avoid was and how we tried to do it with. I mentioned that horseshoe shape, uh. Concrete, so basically the water's gonna come down and we're gonna bring it around the side. And one of our issues is what, we didn't wanna have a bathtub, obviously filling up with water there. So that's how we tariffed down, uh, three ways and we did that horseshoe shape all around the side. So he's gonna bring the water down around the side, but again, now we have the civil engineer to, um, to give details and, uh, topos of all of it. Both in the works.
And are you considering, um, photovoltaics and, uh, all electric?
Yes, we, we already, uh, uh, know that's your requirement, starting January first, if I recall. All electric, everything correct and solar panel, yes, we are, so it's all in the works.
That's it, thank you.
Good, all right, thank you, um. Over here. Margaret Vandell, do you have any questions for these guys?
Um, no, I, I'll say that I did go over and see the lot. It's, um, pretty remarkable that, uh, anything can be. Uh, placed in there, I, um, live on a hillside. And it, it's not easy when it rains the way it has been raining. To, um, ta- take care of that amount of water. And there's a home being built across the street from me and they do have a U-shaped retaining wall that they put in there. And there's a swimming pool there now, not a home. So it's really, um. I think critical that you, uh, take care of that water issue and also make sure it doesn't impact. Your neighbors by diverting it into their, uh, area because, um. With the rains that we have and what's been, being predicted, it's gonna be critical.
We, I had that specific conversation with him about a week and a half ago and. Quite stressful, the moment, from his other projects, so he, uh, he's quite aware of, of the water issue and we have talked about it. And this is what we're up. Up with him, um, on how to address it, but it's all gonna be detailed out, so he's been involved in it up and down too.
Okay, Jim.
I have a question on how we're gonna treat the retaining walls. Specifically, the one that's gonna be very large on the south side of the driveway.
And so if you're facing the house on the left side, right?
Yes, sir, right.
A lot of that we came so. Yeah, on that, but on the left side. It's basically no, not gonna be any windows on the left side, or just some, the only thing that's gonna be there is, is high trans window. So the, uh, the retaining wall is gonna be stepped down on that side, so.
No, my question is more about the driveway as you.
There will be a retaining wall on, on both sides, I believe that side is gonna be about eight feet. And the right side, I believe it's gonna be three feet or under, we have to do ex- exact topo on it. I believe that, that's how it's, it's gonna be wind up.
You think it's just gonna be concrete as a finish or?
Uh, well, we, we. Something probably prettier than that, as, as you noticed, we did the bottom part limestone of the house. So we might just wrap the limestone around that for, for aesthetics. So the, the way the house is broken up, as you can see, we have the limestone and then we have stained wood and then we have, uh. Stucco and then where a lot of the stucco is, we're gonna have planting, uh, going up the side over that too.
Would you consider stepping it back and maybe having a planting bed of hedges or something so you don't? The, the public's not faced with a huge wall.
Well, um, oh, you mean on the left side?
Yeah.
Um.
Driveway, that might be.
I, uh, can we do that, Phil?
Over the three feet, I believe, right?
Oh, yes, that's that, no, that's fine, so you're talking about this, uh, at the edge of the garage, stepping it back three foot, put a hedge there, a planting.
Some kind of planting. I think it would.
I agree.
The impact of. Of the structure being set back.
Yeah, that can work on plan, we're, we're open to that, that's fine.
And, uh, are the beams, uh, on the, on the trellis, uh, those all gonna be cedar or is it? Uh, what kind of beams are you gonna?
We're in the midst of discussing that and seeing what the new products are, are out there. And it's either gonna be, uh, real stained cedar or some of the new composites. Um, we're dealing with other projects in, in, uh, in Marin and you guys, uh, not you in particular, but everybody has a lot. Of issues, fire rating and so forth, that's what we're looking at now too, how the stucco is the, uh. Uh, the, the siding, so we're reviewing a lot of the new products that are out there right now too, we're in the midst of that. Barbara has done. Many, many samples of all of that, so we're already. So already, probably looking at, at, at that and there are a lot, a lot of new products out there, especially with all the fire stuff we've had. Yeah, and it looks, nice looking stuff out there.
Um, how, how, is the roof gonna slope from front to, uh, front to back or, or is it gonna be a? How are you gonna train it? It looks like a really small profile for such a long, big roof.
Yeah, we haven't, it, it'll, it'll be the minimum of two percent, uh, uh, slope somewhere, I'm not sure how exactly we're gonna do it. Because we also have to take into account the solar panels that are gonna go up there and we're going to have, we're gonna put a, um. Uh, uh, a parapet, the high dome solar panel. On the plan itself, we just have general parameters of where the solar panels will go. So we'll work with how we're gonna do the solar panel, the drainage and that parapet going around. We still have to work out, uh, that detail, but you're right, it, it, my guess is that it's going to. Probably have an intermittent slope, uh, in the middle, not front, uh, the back. Because the way it's stepped.
Yeah, I, I could see that becoming a little bit bigger, but just the size of the roof.
I have to interrupt, uh, we have to take a vote here to continue after ten o'clock.
So. Move to continue, alright. Second.
Okay, voice, voice vote.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, we will continue then, alright.
Uh, I, I only have one other question, uh. Uh, the, the light well. Uh, there's some kind of unique, kind of cool. Did a really good job working with the site, actually. The light well to get the egress, well, the light into that guest bedroom, I'm assuming there's gonna be, uh. A fire rate, a fire approved ladder or something?
Yeah, we're gonna look, I don't know, um.
And it's a building question, but I just.
I don't know what, I have to look up what your codes are, your codes are gonna be one or the other, they're either gonna allow us to use the free foot ladder and to go straight up. If they don't allow that, we'll just do steps, uh, going up there. Uh, there was a couple of things we wanted to do, we, we, if you notice in the corner room there, we have glass on both sides. But we're gonna meet the requirements, cause you have a couple, you have. Several issues in the bedroom, you have to have the egress, you have to have light and air. So we did the corner windows to meet the light and air and also, uh, we did the light well for, um, egress. So yes, you're correct, it'll be, uh. I don't know if it's gonna be a ladder or steps, I wanna look at the exact codes and requirements for that. I believe we, we do have in the, the size that's required to get the right light and air in there. But yes, um, it was, um. Tricky, we did that and just to let you know, at first we did have more dug out, we, we had the lower level dug out. But we mitigated the excavation by filling that in and putting that light well in. So we got a little creative, uh, how we're gonna get all that work with the least impact on hillside.
Actually, your engineers are gonna have fun with a step pass.
Okay. Um, I'm going to ask that anybody who would like to make a public comment, um, please do so at this time. We'll open this up for public comment, we got some very patient people who have been here a long time, so. Um, it looks like they wanna hear each other or make some statements, so please step up to the microphone and speak.
I don't have a lot to say and I'm not really anxious to talk, I just, it's past my bedtime, so I wanna get this done. I'm John, uh, my father li- is gonna be living next door to you. Um, and, um. Sort of sounds like you are planning on addressing everything was our concerns. Um, sunlight. Drainage, stability of the hillside. You know, I built several houses in Marin and it's always nice to. Get the neighbors on board and the planning commission on board, of course. Um, so those are the items, those three main items and it sounds like they're going to be addressed and. I guess you'll all make sure that they are and, uh.
Well, to your point, um, staff over here make sure that the geotechnical stuff conforms and the building department does all of that. Um, so they're the ones who are on the hook for that, um, we're gonna be here and talk about the design.
Now, and, and design looks great, so, um.
Um, if you step up to the microphone. Uh, but are you done, sir?
Uh, yeah, no, that's it, I mean, congratulations and I'm looking forward to having you as my dad's neighbor.
So we. You know, we were particularly concerned with Mr. Scarcella's home and the, the shadowing and the shading. And looking at the home that was designed, you know, ten, twelve years ago. How that was situated so close to the street that it really did overpower his home. So we really tried to position this home to meet the setback requirements, which I still don't get, but I don't have to. And then to give him, you know, as much light and air as privacy and also to, uh, Mrs. Killian as well on the other side.
Alright, thank you. Um, who else would like to speak, please? We can bend it down to you or we give you a mic.
Well, this might be an interesting fact, I used to slide down that hill on a cardboard. Well, this might be an interesting fact. I used to slide down that hill on a cardboard. When I was a kid, because I grew up here, but um I really appreciate Barbara listening. Oh, I have to stand away.
No, 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 that you can stay there. I just need.
Okay.
I'm short.
Yes, well, I am too. Um, I appreciate that Barbara um. Listen to me about privacy and light. I still am a little worried because my um. Dining area and patio is at the exact same elevation as the second floor deck. And I have big windows and, you know, I just don't want people looking in. And vice versa, I don't want to be. But um I did talk to Barbara today and she has some ideas. So we can talk about that more. But I just wanted to make you aware. And then what about lighting? Is there gonna be lighting on?
We haven't gotten there yet. There there will be lighting.
Yeah.
There are codes that we will have to read for exterior lighting to give private, again, privacy.
And reflection too.
And we'll we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, okay. So, thank you.
All right, who else?
Since I'm a commissioner in training and I'm already here, I can comment and just also a beautiful project that I always admire, great projects around. Um, but just quick suggestion, just because the water issue's been brought up and it's going to be a concern in the future years as well. Just if you would consider any kind of water harvesting techniques for your internal irrigation. Or perhaps even for the toilet flushing as well. I mean, those are uh relatively inexpensive techniques right now. They're out there in the market to. Uh, especially you have that hill and a slope uh in your um uh disposal. So you can definitely integrate that and it will help with uh diverting the water from the street as well as with your irrigation internally.
All right, thank you. All right, who else? Anyone? Okay, see no hands up there. No one rising up. Uh, Tracy, do you have anybody?
Yes, um, Mr. Keith Nudson. Go ahead uh on your Zoom, unmute yourself.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Beautiful. Good evening, planning commission members and Phil Boyle. And Phil, thanks for your time yesterday. I really appreciate it. Uh, my name's Keith Nudson. I'm here representing my ninety-six-year-old mother and two sisters. My mom's Jean Nudson. She lives at one-two-one Elm Avenue, right up the hill there. And you know, I've got a few comments, uh mostly kind of just observations, if you will, but. You know, as I reviewed the new package and to be candid, I mean, I see a lot of similarities between this one and the one that didn't get done in two thousand fourteen. And looking back at the commission meeting minutes from that particular meeting, you know, the comments, Mr. Cohen, the owner. He, the quote is, he noted that anything built on this lot would be imposing. Commissioner Metcalf said that 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 structure was too tall, too massive, not in harmony with the neighborhood. And then Mr. Bell, the planning, uh, one of the planning gentleman over there, he said noted that the FAR is not an entitlement. So in other words, meeting the FAR to me doesn't necessarily mean that this is a good project, but. Um, and then other comments about the third story. Um, in any case, as it's been noted, it's a challenging, challenging lot, but. Um, you know, like if logic tells me, there's a reason why this lot hasn't been developed in hundred and seven years, but you know, that's maybe there's other reasons for that. I've got one question, perhaps for Phil, on the notice of public hearing document whereby it talks about the um Environmental Quality Act. Is exempt based on Article nineteen, section fifteen, three oh one. That particular section, Phil, talks about references existing facilities. So I'm not so sure if that's a typo or I missed. I'm not reading that that's that section properly, but it just addresses existing facilities and to my knowledge, this is a vacant lot. Um, but going forward, so as as you talked to a couple neighbors here, she reached out to, I think, twenty-four. Of which I think seven or eight responded. Um, but between my mom, you know, the the neighbors in the area that are affected by this, we've all been living in the neighborhood for probably, I'm gonna guess. A couple hundred years total, paying our taxes dutifully, you know, during those years. And so I think the history of this neighborhood uh really merits serious consideration as the effect of this development and that's what we're doing right now. Um, but you know, it's also very difficult to make an assessment of what they're doing here without the story poles and the strings and. As the architect noted, you know, it seems like what we're looking at here is really not what we're gonna be seeing at the end of the day. So that's, you know. Just an observation again, but my concerns and my mom's concerns and my sister's concerns are. You know, obviously our view uh out to the bay and and it's noted several times in 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 Ms. Friedman's document that the this is a view lot. It's a new view, this and everything's a great view. And of course, like rightly so, we want to protect our view. And as an example, our neighbor to the to the west of us, when she moved in, not long after, she planted a grove of redwood trees and some other large trees. And now here we are twenty-five years later and our view of Mount Tam has been demolished by about ninety percent. So those are things that we've experienced over time and I'm just trying to throw those out there to see what area, what we could do, what can be done. To, you know, to assure us that 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 view will not be ultimately impaired. Um, you know, the size and mass of the house, even by square footage, if you look at her far comparison. So out of the uh twenty-three houses she compared of the existing homes, not remodels. There's there are twenty-six ninety-one plus the garage of five hundred, seven hundred to be thirty, even if you don't consider the garage. Their property is. At the twenty-three properties, there's only two of the properties that have a higher F FAR, F A R. Likewise, in the the homes that have been re- either remodeled or new construction. Out of the six she has there, you know, there's only two there that are that are bigger than what she's proposing. Um. You know, uh, let's see here. And again, the other concern we've got is on the roof. It's clearly noted in the document that there's gonna be solar panels. And those can be reflective and we're up above her and the sun comes up in the morning, so that solar panels are a concern as to how they would affect. Our our views and and our our, you know, just living up on the hill there. Um, uh, I also believe that that lot is a wild left corridor. It's been there, it's been vacant, as noted several times here. Forever, it, you know, it's never been, never been developed. And there's deers, foxes, there's birds, there's red-tailed hawks, there's there's bobcats. There's a riot of animals that circle the whole Palm Hill there and they've got unimpeded, you know, ability to go around the hill. And I'm not sure how this would impact that, but I just wanted to mention that. Um, the the parking with a two-car garage and the four cars in the driveway for a total of six cars, it seems like that's a massive driveway, but as important. I looked and I found out that the driveway is gonna be like twenty, twenty-two feet wide. And I think there's the front of the lot is about twenty-five feet wide, so that's only a foot and a half between. The end of the driveway and the and the adjoining property line, which to me is is kind of, you know, cutting a little bit close. And as noted earlier too, I think I'm confused a bit about the building height, twenty feet versus thirty feet. Um, and I did notice.
You're off, sir. Um, we've, you've gone past, well, past the three-minute limit. I didn't tell you, but uh I'm gonna cut you off here.
Sorry.
It's all right. Um, but um I appreciate your commentary. Um, thank you very much. Uh, we heard a lot there from you.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I hadn't more to say, but I guess that's it for now. Thank you, sir.
All right, bye-bye. Okay. Anyone else, Tracy?
I don't see anyone else, Chuches.
Okay, all right. No one else wants to speak up in here? Um, you're welcome to. This is informal. We throw the rulebook out the window for this. Yes, you do. Right.
I I've had several conversations with Mr. Nudson and I understand his concerns. I tried to explain to him how we're situating the house on the lot. There's still. A huge distance between the back of our house and the back of the lot. So we are not crowding his mother's house. We are not high enough to inhibit their views or or. Do they they really won't be affected at all except by during the period of construction, which nobody wants to live through that, but. And wait a minute, wait a minute. One more thing about the the animals roaming. We're not gonna fence in the whole yard. We're gonna fence in partially back from our patio area. So there will be grazing area for the deer to continue to roam, but we'll fence in part of it so that we can still have a garden there. So. And I've told that to him.
Okay. Uh, if you would step up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
From the roof to the top of our property and Mr. Nus's property is behind that. It's about forty to forty-five feet in elevation. Okay, so. Um, seeing our building would be actually difficult from up there.
Right. Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to identify uh his comments in relation to where his lot was and that's apparent, right? Okay. It's time for some feedback. So we're here to talk about design and give them some direction about this. Conceptual plan that they put together for us to give them some feedback. Um, you know, it will go from here to be informalized, as he says, they'll get the consultants on board. And really develop it a little further, get some of these wrinkles they've talked about uh on the paper. Uh, and move on with it if we give them that direction. So we should start in and do that so we can get out of here in fifteen minutes, so. Dan.
Uh, well, like I said, I think you're you're struggling with a tough problem and I think you're doing a good job. I understand there'll be some. Changes, you know, uh responding to the neighbors and so forth. Um, and I look forward to more detail around, you know, the excavation and the drainage and how you're gonna handle that. Um, and uh. I don't really have any specific comments on the design at this point.
Okay, all right.
Keep it short.
Uh, Dr. Bundy.
Uh, yeah, it's a quite a handsome uh home, I believe, and you've really done a lot to fit it in there and not impact the neighbors. And want to reassure the neighbors here and Mr. Henson that called in. That uh when the story poles go up, Phil's gonna go out and take pictures and. You know, if they want to invite us uh to their home to to look at what they're gonna see in relationship to the story poles, we routinely do that. So. Uh, I think all of these concerns that have been brought up will uh will get addressed. I guess the the only, I know you haven't really gotten into plantings, uh, but it would be, you know, good if. Uh, some plantings would help with some of the privacy issues also, just to uh not uh not. Overburden yourself with uh privacy screens and such, but uh good luck going forward.
Okay. Margaret, do you have any thoughts about design and so forth on this?
Um, I did look around the neighborhood, drove drove up and down. I um I can't say that this really fits into the neighborhood. I think that um. There are some two-story or higher houses there of the the sort of. Ranch. I don't know what, how you would name those. Styles of the of the homes that were first built there, but I also know that. Um, I I I can't imagine any other style building fitting onto that lot. Um, it just kind of needs to be this stepped up. Uh, sort of progression of levels. And um and I think it's a remarkable. Heat that that it ever, you know, uh, can be built into that hillside. I'm curious about that. Um, but as far as fitting into the neighborhood, I think that doesn't quite make it. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you, Margaret. Jim.
Well, I think it's attractive design. Um, and I and I and I think it's really hard to to build an up up slope. I think there's some great techniques used with a slope to. The slope driveway to get to get you up to the. The structure to to make the parking work, uh, not to grade that much. On the backside, we've got some step retaining walls that will be. Landscape. I think that's a great technique. Um, my comment about the retaining wall, I I encourage uh. The architect to maybe look at, look at that and see how that's gonna be, you know, facing the streets. It's a big, a big impact on the on the public. Uh, on that side. Um, and I'd like to see a site plan with uh with topo lines, because. It it was hard to tell how high the the building was compared to the neighbors and. So in the next presentation, if you could put um. You know, uh, the topo with the actual numbers on it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, that would, that would help out a lot. Um. And you know, I think all the windows are, they're facing the right way. Uh, when I was at the site, I just want to say our ordinance covers uh light. And right privacy and error. It doesn't, we don't have a view ordinance. So when I was out there, uh. And I and I was looking towards the house, I didn't see that we were blocking anybody's view going to the north. Um, most of the views are predominantly to to the east there and to the south, like southeast. Um, I went there specifically at later in the day to see if there was any shade implications and there was not, because there's a mountain, the mountains kind of. The one uh, I was looking at a on page A four, A one point, uh, zero point four. I was, uh, there's a rear yard uh. A photo, which was interesting to me because uh the whole, the the whole neighborhood is in shade and it from the mountain. So I don't think that by adding the structure, it's going to exacerbate uh. The impacts of 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 the light coming from a shadow from a new structure there. Um, so I would say it's very attractive design and all the luck to you. I uh. I would encourage you to get bids on the on the retaining walls. Yeah, that's it's it's gonna be a big expense on this one, but um and I think that I I like the design. I think they did a great job for what it is. Uh, and the models help out a lot, um, especially when the grading gets on there with the retaining walls. I think it's gonna. Um, I don't want to sell, sell the neighborhood on it, but it will help you with your community outreach, I believe, with the models, because. Elevations specifically in our in our CAD programs, it looks so flat. It it just looks so massive. And then you see how step backed it is and and you realize it's, oh, this is a very attractive way to address a very complicated prob- problem, so. Good luck with uh with the next.
Yeah. It is a good design. Um, it is kind of current, typical means and methods that you've got there and people are exemplifying that around in current. Uh, buildings, but here you put them together in an attractive manner. Um. I I worry about the amount of glass that you've got facing east, not from a uh. Fine standpoint, but just from a living in it standpoint, you know, it's gonna get that eastern sun. You're gonna have shade dropping. Um, these uh open windows will read uh like beacons of light at night with the interior lighting. People don't think about that, but um you're probably gonna want to drop shades uh over those windows day and night. Um, for various reasons. Um, when you make your package, um, please. I would ask that you submit some sort of glass spec or something about whatever coatings you're gonna do on the glass or the color of the glass is apparent. Uh, that's important. Um, and um. You know, the the materials board that you put together should be uh pretty explicit with this. Um, it's it's a good design. Now, there is no comparison to what this was in the previous application. That went before that. Anybody that makes that is way off base here, because this is much more uh subdued. Uh, it is much lower, it is much more uh sight respecting, I think, in a way it steps up the hill a little bit. And I like how you brought the light down into the bottom of the house rather than creating uh a story going up the hill further, right? So that's what uh I think the previous architect's solution was to just create more living space further up the hill. Here you brought light down into the lower part. And that's an accomplishment of foresight in addition. And so, um. It's it's a good design and you know, if this was before us, I think there would be very few comments that would require alteration to it. And um I'd be inclined to approve it with minor modifications if it came before. So, um. The 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 application is the easy part. But boiling is gonna be the hard part. Um, really, so um and you've got a tight site. Um, you've got neighbors that are gonna be watching your every move, so. Difficult, so um I I wish you luck and um thank you for uh bringing this to us as a study session. It's a good thing. Um, and um. Yes.
I thought one more thing that I think is great, that you're gonna extend the. I thought one more thing that I think is great, that you're gonna extend the sidewalk in front of the house. And the more sidewalk we have, the better it is for everybody in the community.
That's great.
So there you have it. We can close. Oh, okay. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, um, well, I just wanna review what um Commissioner Rizzo said about landscaping, and I think if when you come back, there's the landscape plan. I think again that privacy issues could be addressed, you know, by that. Uh, and also uh even some of the uh heat gain issues, you know, in the uh might even be addressed by some uh without blocking views by some some landscaping. Uh, the only other thing on the design would be uh just looking at the the uh the horizontal wood wood members or whatever they are, is whether that would read better if they were a little bit lighter. They they make it look a little heavy, but I I leave that to you, um, obviously. Um, uh. It's your decision.
Final materials left.
Yeah.
I like your idea, by the way, stepping back.
Yeah, true idea, right.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Is.
Nothing's cheaper anyway. More money. So thank you, guys. Good luck and uh.
Good luck.
For it, right. Yeah. Right. Um. Uh, before us, uh tonight, we normally go into commissioner reports and so forth.
I'm gonna do it next time.
Yeah, I would uh be in favor of abandoning ship and getting out of here. So. All right, so let's adjourn.
And don't, yeah.
Just make a note that again, our next meeting is Wednesday, February fifteenth, not Tuesday, February fourteenth. So Wednesday, February fifteenth.